Good evening, let's call this closed session to order for September 22nd, 2025. Current time is 4:00 PM. Adam Kirk, would you call role please?
Councilmember Bieber.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Venable.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
All present.
Thank you ma'am, any public comment?
No public comments.
Perfect. With that, we will move into our conference room. Time is still 4:00 PM. Good evening ladies and gentlemen. Called to order this regularly scheduled city council meeting for September 22nd, 2025. Current time is 6:00 PM. We're going to ask that Pastor Joel Vincent come up and give the invocation, followed by our captain leading us in the pledge. So could I please have everybody rise?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for our leaders and for what you've done for our city. We're so glad to live in this beautiful city named Ucaipa, meaning wet green place. We pray for a special blessing on each leader individually. John Thorpe, our mayor, Chris Venable, Mayor Pro Tem, Bob Miller, Judy Woolsey, Justin Bieber, our council members. We pray that you will give them wisdom and guidance in every decision they need to make. We thank you that you taught us how to communicate with you. So we're going to pray this. Our Father, let's pray it together. Our Father, who is in heaven, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come, your will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from the evil one. For yours is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Thank you Pastor, thank you Captain. Adam Kirk, would you please call role?
Councilmember Bieber.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Venable.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
All present.
Thank you ma'am. Mr. City Attorney, anything to report from closed session?
Thank you Mayor, there's no reportable action on items A or B. On item C, the city council gave unanimous direction to appraise the property located at 36-800 Oak Glen Road. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Interim City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
Yes Mayor, I'd like to add an item under discussion regarding on-call emergency construction management services.
Alright, do I have a motion from City Council?
So moved.
Have a first and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. With that, move into special presentations. We'd like to recognize Pastor Joel Vincent, the pastor just our invocation. I'll start off with Mayor Pro Tem's got a certificate for you Pastor, we're going to recognize you this evening, followed by Pastor Richie Owen. Owen Ritchie had come up and read, give a statement on behalf of the community and fellow pastors as well. So go ahead.
In recognition of 27 years dedicated to the service of Ucaipa community, we honor your steadfast leadership, compassionate guidance, and unwavering commitment to your congregations. Through your ministry, you have inspired hope, fostered unity, and enriched the lives of countless individuals. With a heartfelt appreciation, the Ucaipa City Council congratulates Pastor Joel Vincent on his well-deserved retirement, and extends the warmest wishes as you embark on this new chapter of your life.
Since coming to Ucaipa in 1998, Joel Vincent has served the community through his leadership of the Assemblies of God Church on Second Street, and through various events and programs across the valley. His leadership of the church included the revitalization of not just the campus, but the growth of the people that he served. He oversaw the creation of a Spanish ministry, reaching a brand-new segment of the city. He began a food ministry for the church and community, obtaining and distributing turkeys at Thanksgiving. He also had active participation in the community Christmas parade, bringing cheer to the folks along the route. Joel served the community at large through his leadership of the Ucaipa Valley Christian Ministerial Association, which he faithfully led for more than 11 years. Through the association, he saw the annual Good Friday service fruition held annually at different locations throughout our community. He also organized various community-wide prayer events, including during the unrest in 2020, and regular gatherings at several times during the spiritual year, the spiritual calendar, celebrating important religious holidays. Joel has partnered with the Blessings Center Ministry, helping to offer transitional housing programs for homeless and children at risk. He's helped to organize CERT training programs, equipping churches to help our community in times of crisis. He's been a faithful and reliable servant of the community, ready to help whenever called upon. But perhaps his most important accomplishment is the 25th anniversary of the marriage to his lovely wife Cheryl. Like you said, recently Joel retired from his pastorate at All Peoples Church in Ucaipa, bringing to a close 27 years of dedicated service. And we also want to congratulate Joel Vincent and wish him blessings on the next chapter of his life. Joel, thank you.
Pastor? Pastor, meet us up here by the dais and take your picture.
We also wanted to present that token of our appreciation as the ministerial association and all of the churches that you have served faithfully for the past 27 years. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for your commitment, and thank you for your constant faithfulness. Thank you.
Alright, with that, move to our public safety update. Start with the police department.
Good evening Mayor and Council. I don't know if we have a PowerPoint up here or not. Thank you. There we go. Thank you. Good evening Mayor and Council, here's your Ucaipa Police Public Safety Report for August of 2025. For calls for service, we had 3,574 calls. We maintained a four-minute average response time to emergency calls, and pink call times are Sunday through Tuesday afternoons. Part 1 Crimes, we had zero homicides, zero rapes, one robbery, 27 aggravated assaults, three burglaries, 22 larceny or thefts, five motor vehicle thefts, and zero arson's. For arrests, we had 85 arrests, 69 were adult bookings into one of our correctional facilities. The most common arrests were narcotic-related offenses, warrant arrests, trespass offenses, and domestic violence incidents. In our traffic enforcement division, we had 101 traffic citations that were issued in the month of August, and 24 traffic accident investigations. We had nine DUI arrests, and three Office of Traffic Safety operations. Concerning our solution ordered and policing team, we had 28 transient calls for service, 23 complaints or tips via the Ucaipa app. Three subjects were accepted assistance or information, and one was in placement. We had over 40 park patrols and vacant property checks, and we had continued collaboration with local business owners and managers with nine updated letters of agency. Any questions?
Thank you sir. My colleagues, do you have any questions, concerns? Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to the fire department.
Honorable Mayor, Council, people. This will be your August stats, for August, another busy month, 881 calls for service. Station 1 keeps creeping up there where they're getting almost as busy as 3's here. Year-to-date calls for service is six, almost 6,400. We did see a 13% increase from last month, and 19% from August this time last year. So kind of a common trend every month, every year, every month, just, you know. A couple of mutilated fires, I took a strike team to the Garnet Fire, that fire up in the Sierra National Forest. Also Fresno, went up, ran the high fires, a branch director, and then the Coughlin Fire up in Baldi Mesa, went up as the incident commander for that. Station 2 driveway, it was only 410 years old, and we got a new driveway going, so that was, we were pretty excited about that. It wasn't that old, but it, actually the inmate, Chief Shaw, who used to be in my position, did that with the inmates, I believe like 40 years ago when he was a crew captain here. So it's, it was due, so, looks great. We appreciate it. I got to 10 national night out with our law enforcement and public safety partners there, and it seems like it gets busier every year. And then a lot of school tours, especially with the September, October coming, so that we're going to schools, or they're coming to us pretty much every week. So while the Christian came to tour at Station 1, went to the Cornerstone BBQ ribbon cutting, North Bench Firewise there with Councilman Miller and some other folks, and we'll recognize them next month, but Chapman Heights did receive their Firewise recognition, so if you live there and it's on their website, if you log in, there's the certificate and you give your insurance for your insurance discount, and that's huge, that's almost 1,900 residences, so it's a big chunk of the city. And we did firefighter storytime at the library, we have a good rapport with the library, and we do a lot of events with them. That's what I have for you, unless you have any questions.
I got a question sir.
Yes sir.
You can go back to the slide regarding station stats for calls for service for August?
Yep.
So if Station 1 responds to assist Station 3, are you reflecting as a Station 1 call or a Station 3 call?
Both.
Both.
Because you need that call for service.
Is there way, does your analytics have an opportunity to tell us how often stations are being called out of their?
Hundred percent. So I record everything by response area, so obviously if we can't have one fire engine run everything, so if we have a structural fire, we need whatever, five engines.
Sure.
Yes, we can break it down like that. So Station 1, and I don't know if this is where you're going, but there, you want to see your engine in their response area 90% of the time or greater. They're always going to go out because you're going to have TC extrication, structural fires, blah blah blah. Our current, last time I pulled it out of area response for Station 1 was 27% because of the double-ups going to Station 3, 100%. Yeah, they're getting pulled out way too much.
Yeah, I think it's something we should be aware of and having as part of our discussion, especially as we move forward with our strategic plan for public safety, or including public safety in our strategic plan as it relates to staffing. And if Station 1 is increasing their calls for service because they're over, they're covering Station 3's, I don't want to say inability, but a fire engine going to be in one place at a time.
Yeah, they're unavailable.
That is something we should, we should note. If Station 3's area responsibility is that busy, then it begs the question is, are we providing the service we need to provide to the people who live in Station 3's AOR? Or does it need to be amended? And if that is, obviously, my finance director's probably looking at me right now, but if that means we have to spend more on fire services, if that means we need to redraw boundary lines to be more equitable, it's something that I think we need to be aware of, so we, moving forward, we can try to address that. Because if Station 1's covering Station 3, and Station 2's on the call, who's driving the boat?
Yep.
So, alright, thanks sir.
Hundred percent agreeing, if the law enforcement thing doesn't work out for you, we got a fire call for you.
Sir. Any other questions or comments? There's cats stuck in a tree, I'm not sure I'll be that good, I'm afraid of heights, sir. Colleagues, have any other questions, comments?
No.
Thank you sir.
Thanks.
Brings us to code enforcement.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm here filling in for Trevor today. My name is Diana, I'm the code officer for the SOFT team. I'll be presenting the code enforcement steps for the month of August. Bear with me please. For the month of August, we had 37 new cases submitted, 10 of which were resolved by the end of the month. Some of the top cases we had was overgrown vegetation, trash and debris, public right-of-way maintenance. There were no properties approved for the fine forgiveness program in the month of August. For inspection activity, there was 49 inspections conducted, 33 total cases were closed out. $19,870 was received in citation fees. For mobile home parks, there were three new cases opened with one comprehensive inspection done. There were three poultry ranch inspections with no violations found. And these are just some before and after photos. And if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you ma'am. Any questions, concerns from my colleagues? I do have a question, sorry. Not of you ma'am, I think it's more for our finance director. Can you help us, educate us on the fees received each month? Does that money flow straight into the general fund? Is it earmarked for code type of expenditures? Or where does this, these funds go that somebody pays for a violation of our municipal code?
Yeah, the short answer is they flow right back to the general fund. They're tracked, they're, the way that those fees are established is based on the actual cost of what it takes to deliver those services. But when they flow back in, they go back to the general fund for council's appropriation the following year.
Thank you sir.
Thank you. And I want to thank publicly the police and fire department for their response and handling the recent floods, mudslides that we've had in Oak Glen and Forest Falls and areas around our city. So thank you from all of us, really appreciate it. With that, that brings us to public comment.
We will start with Donna Snodgrass, followed by Dr. Hampson Wong and Niles O'Hara.
Please state your name if you live in the city, and be mindful of the three-minute timeframe please.
Sorry, I'm a little confused. I'm glad to hear that station finally got repaved, because 1985 was the first year Ray was here as the battalion chief, so he'll be happy to know that it finally got fixed. The city contracted a loan for property for about an 80-acre parcel on Oak Glen Road a year or so ago, no, not quite a year, maybe. It was the Coiman property next to the Five Winds Ranch, and it's recently discovered that Mr. Coiman passed away last June. So this property will probably now be tied up at least a year, if not three years, in probate. So how will any missed loan payments impact our budget now?
Next, we have Dr. Hampson Wong, followed by Niles O'Hara.
Good evening, thank you Council. So, the Coiman property is actually, the contract is through Coy Builders, and they have their own company, that's what it goes through. And in theory, if everything is in line, and the payments that are due or paid, then nothing should change. But I do have some concerns, if it's such a good contract, and we're getting 7%, and everybody was happy for it, and getting a better rate than anywhere else, why is it that we need to relook at it? And a lot of times, people that have a property own will relook at the value of the property near the end of it, which is probably next November. And so you might want to know at that time what it's worth, whether you want to keep it, what you're going to do with it. It's a little strange to have a closed session at this time to look at it. The closed sessions in my mind, and I could be wrong, and our attorney can correct me, are for HR things, contract negotiations, lawsuits, either present or prospective lawsuits. And this doesn't seem like it's part of that, but I'm sure there's some reason that it was chosen to be in a closed rather than an open session. The other thing in a different area, our budget is of great concern to us, and all of you have spoken on what we should do, can do, why we need certain things, and so on, such as the warehouses and so on. But yet, we're spending time and money on consultants and meetings and stuff for the and meetings and stuff for the zoning change as well as the warehouses. And we should make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck. And who is it we should educate? Should we educate the people that's already made up their minds, either for or against it, that come to City Hall or listen to the meetings? Or should we reach out in some other way to spend our money wisely, if at all? And should we do, should we even spend money or consider it even before there's an actual referendum that's in line? Anyway, thank you for your time. Good night.
Niles O'Hara, followed by Jennifer Vo.
Good evening, Council. It's great to see you all here. Firstly, I, I just want to express how much we love and appreciate this council right here. I, I've heard some words in the community flying around, some people saying negative things about you guys. And I just want to step up here as an individual, sharing my individual opinion, as a humble member of this community, that you have a, a, a huge group of a silent majority of voters and supporters that love what you are doing right now. You have made some command decisions in the development of our city that have not been easy. I think we can all recognize that you have a very unique burden. I think that there have been some people that have gone as far to try and stir the pot, so to speak, to insinuate that there's some sort of financial impropriety with some council people. I want to stand in front of you and say, I don't agree with that. I reject that premise. Anyone that says that this council is on the cut is watching too many movies and getting too jacked up as a keyboard warrior. We know what it takes to try and bring strong conservative leadership to this community. I applaud and I respect what you all are doing. As we go about, as a community, as we go about our development process, you all have that unique mantle of making a decision as far as land use and what's going to happen with, with the area. Recently, there's been a lot of conversation about the freeway corridor and, and everything that's going to happen there. I think that some of us in here really have a vision, that, that we have an opportunity right now to make something beautiful out of our city. Ukepa dirt is worth a lot these days. We should not let opportunities fall by the wayside like they have in the past. There's the reason why certain retail groups aren't going to come here. They already tried to come here. They already tried to supply the infrastructure. They were denied, so they went to cities next door that we're in competition with, so to speak. As we move forward with what has been proposed, and as you carry the support and the love with a silent majority of your community, I would like to remind you guys of the beautiful industrial opportunities that we have to bring American manufacturing into our city, something that Ukepa has that our competitive neighbors don't. We have a direct brine line connection to say, because of our ultra-advanced treatment mechanisms at the sewage plant, we are able to take wastewater from industrial practices in a high-dollar aerospace engineering type of functions. To me, talking about, we need retail, oh, we need warehouses, that's small thinking. Let's look at big manufacturing with big dollars. Let's do something right by our community. We love you. We support you. Thank you.
Good evening, Council members. This is Zion, by the way. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jennifer Vo, and I am both the mother of a transitional kindergarten student and an educator myself. I am here to share a personal experience that I believe highlights an urgent need for change within our city's after-school program. Recently, my four-year-old son was suspended from the program for an entire month due to having three toileting accidents. As an educator, I understand the importance of structure, rules, and accountability. However, I also know child development, and I want to be clear, toileting accidents are normal for children at this age. At four years old, children are still developing bladder control, self-regulation, and independence. It is unreasonable to punish a child for something that is deva, deva, sorry, developmentally appropriate. The city's after-school program proudly serves transitional kindergarten students. That is a wonderful opportunity for families like mine. But serving TK students also requires preparation, training, compassion, and adequate staffing. Staff members working with this age group need to understand what is typical for early childhood development. They need to be trained to supervise, support, and assist children through toileting accidents, not to treat them as a grounds for suspension. When we suspend children for something as natural as potty accident, we're not teaching them responsibility. We are sending the message that their developmental needs are a problem. That is not the lesson our city should be delivering. As an educator, I know firsthand how much training and support matter. With the right guidance, staff can feel confident, equipped, and compassionate when handling toileting needs. This is not just about my son. This is about every TK student who will enroll in years to come. If we want our programs to truly, to truly serve our youngest learners, we must ensure staff are trained in early childhood development, toileting protocols, and positive guidance strategies. I am not here simply to raise a complaint. I'm here to call for a solution. I respectfully urge the council to review the policies, or lack thereof, and training requirements for staff in the after-school program, SARS. Let's make sure our city is a place where four- and five-year-olds are welcomed with understanding, supported with dignity, and given the chance to grow in environments that match their developmental stage. Our children deserve it, our families need it, and our city can be a leader in making it happen. Thank you for your time and your commitment to supporting the youngest members of our city and our community. Thank you.
What was your name one more time, miss?
Jennifer Vo.
Spell your last name, please.
V-O.
Thank you.
I have no more slips for general public comment.
Thank you, ma'am. At this point in the agenda, it's time for city council members to declare any conflict of interest, if there is any. Seeing and hearing none. Okay, moves us to consent agenda. Anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda at all?
I'd like to, go ahead. I'd like to pull number three, please.
Pull three?
The San Manuel Cares Grant Acceptance.
Okay.
And I'd like to pull one for discussion.
Anybody else?
I'll move approval on the remainder.
I'll second.
So, we got a first and a second to move forward, two, four, and five, and to pull one and three. Correct?
Correct.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item number one.
Well, I approve the consent calendar for September eighth, council meeting. I am not support as the second reading of ordinance four forty-eight, and I would like to, the minutes to reflect my opposition on that item, please.
Absolutely. We can, we can make that happen.
Do we need to vote for that, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, it's a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to item number three.
Good evening again. So, item number three is for a San Manuel Cares Grant. At the Fire Department, we've been feverishly trying to get any and all grants we can. We applied for a San Manuel Cares Grant to replace our essentially antiquated SCBA compressor. It's approximately twenty years old. It, they don't fabricate parts for it anymore. We've been able to string it along, and what we were told last repair was the next break's probably going to be the final one. We applied for the grant in August. We were awarded the grant up to a hundred thousand dollars, which is pretty much full, full awarding. It'll cover this, and it'll be about four- to six-week turnaround for demo and installation of the new existing thing that the infrastructure already hooks up to. It's, we have the right electrical, exhaust, all that. And it's an OSHA-required. We have to get the permitting and all that stuff, all that stuff for it. So, the awarding will cover the full cost of the procurement, and the procurement's also before you as part of that to expend the funds.
Thank you. Obviously, a, a kind of low liability, low discussion item, that's why it's in consent. But I, I wanted to take a moment to reckon, to just kind of highlight a few things, and that's the only reason for my, my request to have it pulled. Number one, we're talking about oxygen for our firefighters to breathe in environments that are uninhabitable. Structure fires where people are escaping, our men and women need to be able to breathe to save lives. This is huge for us. Our budget is huge for us, and we have to be mindful of that. And the fact that we're able to reach out and have this partnership with, and I still haven't mastered the, the pronunciation of the new name, but I'm going to try, Yavietam of San Mill Nation, the tribe, and this relationship that this community has with the tribe is incredible, and we need to continue to foster that, in my opinion. The, there, our history is so ingrained with the history of that tribe, that it makes no sense but to have a phenomenal partnership and relationship, and continue the education of that tribe in our, in our Green Valley. So, I wanted to bring it from consent, not to question it, not to pick it apart, but to truly just give a little bit more of a platform and an audience to what amazing things this tribe is doing to help our, our community and our first responders be safe in what they do. So, I will, I'll move approval of the item, but I did want to make sure that we highlighted that, that partnership.
And, I mean, I think it's a huge win for us, a hundred thousand dollars, not asking for out of general fund for something we absolutely have to have. And we have these talks internally that we, we should highlight that. And I think out of administratively, like you said, it's an easy yes, you know? But we, in an effort to appreciate time as well, was why I put it in consent.
Certainly, no, no. It makes sense.
Absolutely agree with you.
Perfect. So, I'll, I'll move approval on the item.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, sir. Okay, that brings us to item number six. Before we get started on that, for me, I just want to say, you know, a quick statement here. There's been a lot of heavy things that happened this week, locally and nationally. This item that we have here is meant for education. It's meant for talk. It's meant for talking around ideas, trying to figure out some things. I did a, had a op-ed sent to the paper a while back, and I've been criticized that I'm lying. I'm using fear tactics. That is not the case. I am trying to make sure that people understand fully what we're faced with. And that is the purpose of me asking for this to come back tonight, is that if this doesn't go through, and their referendum is successful, there are some serious things that our city has to look at, and we've got to figure out what we're going to do. Know my heart. I am not here trying to scare people. I'm not trying to use a fear tactic. I am certainly not lying to you. If I've gotten something wrong, or I have a wrong perspective at some point in time, if I feel that it needs to be changed, I can apologize for my current stand, and I can apologize for my view if I feel that I have made an error. I do not feel that is the case right now. I can't speak for my other council members. They have to account for what they, what they do. But when there's statements being made online and on newspaper and otherwise, calling into the character and of our council, and that we're lying, and that we're lining our pockets, I think it's inappropriate. So, not trying to set a sour tone for this item, but this has been on my mind for a while. And I will leave it at that. I'll probably be ridiculed for what I did say. So be it. I will welcome other opinions. I don't have a problem with other opinions. But just know that I am trying to make sure everyone has all the information. For me, four's yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item is a freeway corridor-specific plan update study session. In August, the city council approved the 2025 freeway corridor-specific plan update, which, as you know, replaced the 2008 freeway corridor-specific plan that had been in place for seventeen years. Since the approval of the 2025 update, there, there have been a lot of comments and information being shared by the public on social, social media and also other public forums. And as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that information also unfortunately, unfortunately included some misinformation. Many residents have, they're also asking questions such as what happens if the approval of the 2025 plan update is overturned. So, based on that, as you mentioned, the purpose of this study session is to provide additional information, some facts, and also to discuss what would happen if the approval of that update is overturned. These facts have been gathered from, you know, the information that has been presented to the city council in many previous public hearings and meetings, the information from, you know, thousands of pages of studies, reports, and analysis, as well as from decisions and direction from previous city councils, going back to the early nineteen nineties, back in nineteen ninety-two, when, when the discussion first started regarding development, specific development along the corridor. And I think it's important to mention that in the nineteen nineties, the city councils from that time, they adopted policies that identified a few things, and I'll just reiterate them, reiterate those real quick. They are included in the agenda report, but the first one is, you know, the city councils from nineteen nineties identified that the land along the 10 freeway corridor was going to be for housing, commercial, and industrial development. They did identify that, that that development along the corridor was going to be a major contributor to the city's long-term financial sustainability plan in the form of the property and sales tax revenue. And also identified that the development in the corridor would be a key contributor, contributor to funding the costs of public infrastructure in the city. And not just talking about the public infrastructure within the corridor area. This is infrastructure for the entire city, such as, you know, the construction of Fire Station Number Three, the police station facility, our various parks, the Performing Arts Center, and then many of our street and drainage improvement projects. All of that eventually led to the city council adopting the original 2008 plan, which you see on the screen. You know, that, that plan, the 2008 plan included housing, commercial, and business park use. And I think it's important to mention that, that in the 2008 plan, this, what you see on the screen here shows the land uses that were in the previous plan, the 2008 plan. And the areas that are in red, which are for commercial use, and the areas in purple, which are business park, both of those land uses, both of those areas allowed warehouses to be built. This is the, the 2008 plan. And that's evident by, you know, on the bottom right-hand corner, this area here along New York County Line Road was red in the previous plan, and the warehouse project that was recently constructed was within that area, again, consistent with the 2008 plan. That, again, shows you that the old plan allowed warehouses to be constructed on both sides of the freeway, along the corridor, even on the pumpkin patch property, and, and in the other commercial and business park areas. You know, fast forward to August of this year, this is the 2025 freeway corridor-specific plan update, which, again, included housing units, commercial, retail use, and business park. And since there has been a lot of discussion regarding warehouses, I just wanted to point out that the purple areas on this plan is where the warehouses are allowed. And as you can see, they are not along the, the I-10 freeway or Oakland Road or Live Oak. They, as you, as you've seen in many of the documents, they are essentially hidden behind the hills, behind, to preserve the ridge lines, and more importantly, you know, adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant along the south side of the freeway corridor. This graphic here essentially shows what I, what I just mentioned. On the left-hand side, you know, you start out with the 2008 plan. There was a, a decision, should we update the plan? City council gave direction to move forward with the update. We completed the update with the, with the help of our consultant. And then another decision came forward, whether it was to approve the update or not. The city council approved the update, which puts us on the right side of this with the adopted 2025 freeway corridor-specific plan update. And, you know, so what are the impacts if the approval of the 2025 update is repealed and the 2008 plan is in place again? Well, I think that's one of the things that we wanted to talk about here tonight, provide some information regarding what would happen if that plan, the update were- uh, the update were to, to be repealed. And we broke it down into essentially four different impacts. These are what we feel would be the, the four most significant impacts if the plan, if the updated plan is repealed and we default back to the 2008 plan. Uh, you know, there's four items, uh, the housing element, which is our, uh, housing element document, which was prepared by, uh, our staff and in coordination with our consultant. Uh, it was a document that was sent to the state for their approval, their certification. That document was, uh, certified and is for the sixth cycle from 2021 through 2029. And, and then going to the right, we have, uh, our historical, uh, public infrastructure funding model. The impacts to that, the impacts to the city's long-term financial sustainability plan, which I mentioned earlier. And then, uh, lastly, the impacts to the development impact fee program. So we'll begin with the housing element, and I'll hand it off to Ben, uh, Matlock, our Deputy Director and Planning, City Planner.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Um, just wanted to try and give a little bit of context, um, for the freeway corridor and how it kind of relates to our housing element strategy and what it means, uh, to kind of pivot away from that strategy. So, the Ucaipa Housing Element was certified by the state and included as part of its programs and, and update within the document that we needed to revise the freeway corridor, um, to facilitate the development that met market demand and also address some of the deficiencies within it. So there is, under state law, the, the classification of how housing sites get identified to meet the regional housing needs assessment, is the sites need to be feasible. And so if you've had the site planned for affordable housing over multiple cycles, the state goes, you're not gonna build it. You don't get to count it, and so you have to come up with a new strategy. And so as part of the city's, uh, being able to count the freeway corridor was the process of updating the freeway corridor and making sure it can meet the, the, the long-term demands. And so failure to implement the housing element may result in decertification by the state. So the state views all these programs that the city's supposed to do as a contract between the city and the state. And so failure to meet that means that you've broken that contract. And kind of a few different components with the freeway corridor. If we're not able to count that area for future housing needs, then at some point, the housing bank we have in the freeway corridor, which is over twenty-four hundred units, is gonna be reallocated elsewhere because we can't plan on the freeway corridor as meeting that requirement. And then more kind of urgency is decertification puts the city under what's called the builder's remedy for housing projects. And so builder's remedy, um, certainly has gained a lot more kind of media attention over the past couple of years as it's was a very obscure housing law that became very big, um, um, in recent years for being used. And so, so builder's remedy, essentially kind of long story short, is that the city does not have control over kind of housing development projects in the sense that developers don't have to follow the general plan requirements. So they view a housing project, for the city to deny it or to approve it has to rest on, is it consistent with the zoning code? Is it consistent with the general plan? If the general plan is decertified, then the state goes, you can't rely on that inconsistency to be on it. And so then the state establishes the minimum and maximum densities for housing projects. And as long as the housing element is decertified, anyone can submit a project, um, under those provisions. And even if we get certification later on because they submitted it during the, the inactive period, those projects still get to go forward. And so it's definitely not a great spot that cities have found themselves in, um, with decertification of their housing element. Now, kind of in terms of the impacts, um, you know, without the freeway corridor as a vessel for our housing element, we have to kind of plan on what those future housing sites will need to, to be located in order to accommodate it. Kind of short-term is the affordable housing sites. Those are the highest, um, difficulty to manage. Um, and so approximately five hundred between the freeway corridor and Oakland Road, um, are affordable units that would potentially be, uh, up in, uh, you know, up in limbo. And the freeway corridor again becomes an unusable strategy into the future. And so, short-term, before 2029, is looking at how do we relocate the high-density affordable housing units um, within that corridor. And then long-term, if we can't really plan on the freeway corridor providing any housing in future housing element cycles, is then we're gonna have to upload those as we do each housing element to address the, the changes with, uh, the regional housing needs allocation. And so if we kind of look at the city, um, you know, if we're kind of, at the short-term, looking at five hundred units, is how do we address that, that no net loss requirements under state law? Um, city is divided evenly into different districts, and so we have five for each of the council members. Question is, do we want to potentially divide that between the different city council districts? Certainly focusing on vacant land is a lot easier, um, you know, in terms of floating what the density will need to be. Whereas if you're kind of more in a built-in environment, it becomes a lot trickier. And then if we don't really have vacant land, let's say if we wanted to divide evenly in districts, if you're not able to meet the, the numerical number count, then it means that we have to go higher density even from what our highest density is in order to provide for that. And then lastly, you know, we didn't necessarily plan for a bunch of additional housing in these different districts from what the current general plan is. And so the infrastructure itself isn't necessarily designed for that as well. And so just, this is just kind of a tabletop exercise, um, is kind of where these could kind of go. Really kind of the lesson is no stone unturned. If there's vacant land, um, that's be the place that we would need to be looking at. And so if we go to District One as an example, certainly we have quite a bit of undeveloped land. We have the wine country specific line over here and some other projects. And so, you know, you could upzone different parts of, of that. As an example, here's some vacant land, um, you know, on Bryant Street near Grape and Holly. You know, these provide opportunities for additional housing density if we're needing to offload from what was the freeway corridor, um, as an example. If we're moving to, let's say, District Two, more built out, but certainly within the done-up acres, you know, you're kind of looking at a lot less kind of vacant land, but certainly pieces of green in between. And so you kind of look within there. That would be kind of the exercise that we would have to go through for compliance and going, okay. These different underdeveloped parcels then would be kind of opportunities for where that housing capacity would go. If we go to District Three, a little bit more built out, and so not as much available vacant land, um, kind of spread apart. So, these would have to be, if we were trying to split it evenly, really kind of focused in on, on those areas and kind of spot looking at these different sites in order to make up for that, that loss. And so, kind of going in here, kind of see collection of different stuff, opportunities along Custer Street. And so that's an example as well. If we go to District Four, probably the toughest one, um, just because of how it is currently built out with Chapman Heights and other, um, development. Um, you're kind of looking at, you know, where there is green. And so we kind of zoom in on here. You kind of see some opportunities along Fremont and Pendleton and kind of within, you know, some of these other, uh, kind of pieces of land. And then lastly, District Five, um, also has quite a bit of, of built-out development, but as an example, there are still pockets of green. Um, and so, you know, as an example, here you have within the, the, the Wildwood Canyon, you have underdeveloped pieces of property where that kind of facilitates potential density if needed. And so, you know, a lot of it kind of comes down to is, you know, in order to make up for the city's long-term housing growth, so accommodating the needs for future residents and meeting state law, you know, the exercise is a lot easier when you're dealing with just a big area of vacant land, which is why city councils of prior, prioritized the freeway corridor as an opportunity to meeting the housing element for future, uh, cycles. And kind of using this as kind of the, the major anchor for, for new housing while leveraging other, you know, uh, locations to help supplement that. Um, but certainly without this kind of piece, it does make the process a lot trickier. And so if we needed to go through that exercise, um, any stone that can be, you know, turned over would probably be where we'd have to look in order to comply with state law. It won't be an easy process, but certainly, um, uh, could be done. And so again, using vacant land that, you know, has, when the infrastructure gets over and facilitating that transition, um, helps keep it a little bit tighter within the area here versus moving it in addition to existing neighborhoods. And so I'll turn it back to Firmin.
Thank you, Ben. So now just to cover, briefly cover the historical funding model. Um, on the screen, you'll see a list of the projects that, that have been funded by the Development Impact Fee Program. These are projects that were funded through the, the DIF program, uh, but with money loaned from the general fund. So, Fire Station Number Three, the Police Station, the Performing Arts Center, Wilson Three Detention Basin and, and some of our, some of our other drainage basins that, uh, reduce the risk of flooding in the city, the pool complex, and also the Little League Fields at Thirteenth Street, the Thirteenth Street Sports Complex. Again, these projects were, were developed and constructed, um, using loans from the general fund through the DIF program with the idea that the general fund would be repaid by future development impact fees. As part of the approval process for the update, you, uh, the City Council and the public, uh, had an opportunity to see the, the, uh, revenue from, from the development impact fees that would be collected, um, uh, for the specific project that was approved. And again, the idea was that the general fund fronted the money until development occurs. So, um, and then we also have a handful of other projects in our current budget that have been, where funding has been authorized, again with the idea that the, the money from the general fund would be loaned to the DIF program to be repaid, uh, in the future. So the, the third item will cover the city's long-term financial sustainability plan, and I'll turn it over to Phil White, our Finance Director.
Thank you, Firmin. Let's see, uh, Monday morning quarterbacking is, is easy, uh, relative to forward-looking financial projections. So, as Firmin shared on the last slide, the historical financing plan, it's easy for us to look at that and say that, uh, Ucaipa's infrastructure banked on the development of the freeway corridor. The future development, uh, at some point in the future, that freeway corridor is gonna be, uh, the, the linchpin that holds everything together from Ucaipa's financial standpoint. And so this isn't something that, that, that Ben came up with last week. This is something that, since Ucaipa was a city, the freeway corridor was the key to everything. All of those projects that Firmin listed out were all funded, with the component of future development. That future development is synonymous with freeway corridor. That's where the future development has always been planned. And so that's, that's a key part. As Firmin, on that last slide, that was kind of backwards looking. The whole process for financing infrastructure in Ucaipa, that's the model that's always been the case. It's not new. It's always been there. And, um, the, the key of that is at some point in the future, the freeway corridor is going to be developed. Ben just went through a list of slides that highlights, um, all of the housing requirements. Because of the requirements and the timing of the delivery of those housing units, that at some point in the future has really come, become now. Now is the time that the freeway corridor has to develop in order to deliver those housing units. And, again, the freeway corridor has always been, um, the spot for future development in Ucaipa. So, again, our, the, the, um, long-term financial plan is completed when the freeway corridor is developed. As we look ahead to financial sustainability, it requires calculations, estimates, projections and assumptions. This is the opposite of Monday morning quarterbacking where it's easy to look backwards and say, okay, I see what they were trying to do. As we're looking forward, there's a lot of estimates that are involved, and it's, it's really easy to criticize the assumptions used because we don't know. It's gonna change. Every decision that the City Council makes is gonna tweak what those projections look like, the assumptions used. It's a moving target. And so I'm not trying to downplay the importance of the projections. However, they're estimates. They're not known. Um, so we can say that we know that the freeway corridor development is key to the past spending for Ucaipa, but we think, um, that the updated freeway corridor plan, that overlay, that zoning mix is financially sustainable. That's again, something that we're gonna revisit after every single decision to evaluate where we are in that, what our projections were, what those assumptions were, um, and what the newest information is as we look ahead. But as we look ahead for the financial sustainability, we know a couple of things. One is, um, industrial is gonna help property tax. That revenue stream of property tax is significantly helped with, uh, industrial development. Retail helps sales tax. Um, we know that that's the case. Residential, all the residential housing that's, that's going to go there, the revenue stream that's going to, to come from that is property tax. Um, and then also the city is forward-looking in the funding of incremental operating costs. Public safety, what are we gonna do with public safety as those costs continue to go up? Um, we're in the process of, uh, implementing CFDs citywide on new development to help fund, um, those ongoing costs. So again, we can't look backwards and say, it's gonna cost this much and dollar for dollar, this is how we're gonna match it. It requires estimation as we, as we look forward. Also, um, part of the complete plan is to capture the revenues to pay for the services for our residents. Um, this idea of leakage, tax leakage, is the idea that there's commerce existing in Ucaipa. However, um, the, the retail that's, that's, um, occurring in Ucaipa is through, uh, deliveries of Amazons and things like that. We don't have the retail infrastructure, um, of some of our other communities. So while the commerce is, is existing and those deliveries are being made to Ucaipa, uh, there's traffic for those deliveries. Uh, the streets are being, um, utilized, torn up for those deliveries. All of those things are occurring. However, we don't have the brick and mortar shops, um, and the, the, the tax revenues that go along with that. And so while we look at the update in that freeway corridor specific plan, we feel like it is sustainable. We like it. We, we think it's the best spot where the city, um, could be. We didn't do it because we said we need warehouses in Ucaipa. We did the whole overlay to say, in order to bring all of this stuff and deliver the housing units that are required, everything's gotta go. And that's the mix that, that, uh, Ben has been working on and the, with the update that was ultimately, uh, adopted by City Council. So it's not one type. It's the whole overlay, and it all kind of works together, and we're looking at it. We like it. We think it's sustainable.
All right, and then I'll kind of end with kind of the Development Impact Fee Program and kind of what that looks like moving forward. So just kind of at a high level, um, the Development Impact Fee Program assumes that the freeway corridor specific plan will be developed. And it also addresses the infrastructure needs needed to meet those improvements for the community, including those that would correspond within the freeway corridor specific plan. And so hypothetically, let's say if the freeway corridor is not devout, that revenue stream of fees to pay for infrastructure also won't necessarily come to fruition. And so the fees spread through any new development would have to be increased commensurate with that, that loss of development opportunity. But also the component goes with it is the city has projected its capital improvement program and that the pieces of infrastructure needed to support the community based on how the development meets of where stuff will get built into the future and what the needs are for that. And so hypothetically, the freeway corridor is not necessarily quite on the table. We're increasing density elsewhere in the community. It means that the infrastructure that we've either spent money on already to build or need to, to manage that isn't designed for the increased density that we have now added on. And so then the infrastructure program, capital improvements, need to also be shifted to increase infrastructure in areas that may have already been built out, um, to address the increased load that's being added onto it. And so it's just, as we kind of look at how the city has mapped out what we're going to build in order to accommodate what type of growth occurs, that model gets kind of reshuffled around. And so as a result, the demands end up not keeping pace with what the fees assumed, and so those have to increase to, to compensate. And so again, uh, you know, the formula is based on those, uh, those assumptions from the city's general plan. And so without those assumptions coming true, um, the different program model does need to be restructured. And then we also need to recognize that the historical infrastructure, uh, was not paid by future development. And also, you know, with the loans that we have, maybe coming out of the general fund because that mix isn't quite happening as it was intended. And then just kind of at a high level, uh, you know, larger projects for the, the loans that we do have, larger projects are able to knock off the debt a lot faster. So we're able to recuperate the, the city's general fund loans, um, faster. And then the rest of freeway corridor, um, adds the rest, um, from what the Pacific Oaks Commerce Center would be able to contribute. And then lastly, you know, if that doesn't move forward, um, the infrastructure program, so the Development Impact Fee Program still remains in debt. We're not able to move a lot of projects forward because we're already in debt. We're not able to move a lot of projects forward because we're already in debt. And so we're going to need to shift what projects get built to accommodate the growth that's being reallocated elsewhere in the community. But we don't have a funding mechanism until that development catches up. So it means a lot of the infrastructure will be behind when the growth happens, rather than being as proactive as what the initial plan had been with the the Development Impact Fee Program. And so I kind of give just a highlight. Certainly, solutions are available to the different stuff, but definitely complicates the the policy direction in the future, whichever way things go.
Do we have any public comment on this?
We do.
Let's take that before we have our dialogues. I think it's going to be lengthy.
Okay, David Duran. I'm sorry, Mr. Duran, do we only have one copy for council?
Yeah, unfortunately, I left the other ones at at home.
Okay.
If they could read it. And I'm sorry, too, my voice is just a little shot, too. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to ex- oh, I'm David Duran, three, six, zero, six, four, Panorama Drive, Ukaypa. Thank you for the opportunity to express my thoughts. The American Lung Association has identified the inland empire as having the nation's eleventh most polluted air. Most of the junky air coming this way is from the West. Without question, the warehouses will add homegrown diesel truck pollution to the mix. That's what's going to be down there if you approve those. Diesel exhaust is poison. In the stream are organic volatiles and chemicals that hurt lungs and hearts. The poisons include arsenic, cadmium, chlorine, formaldehyde, methanol, nickel, inorganic lead, styrene, toluene, benzene, and others that I can't pronounce that you'll find in that sheet that I passed up. Again, forgive me for not making bringing the others. Council members, warehouse trucks are detrimental to the health and well-being of the citizens of Ukaypa, especially children and seniors. As to the proposal to pretty up the architecture on the warehouse facades to make them more palatable to the eye, there's a truism that says you can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. Thank you. No on warehouses.
Mayor, I have no more slips.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, start with you.
Yeah. The 2008 plan, actually, I'm going to back up. Forgive my ignorance, I was in middle school when this happened, so I'm going to rely on some some institutional knowledge of the city. When was the last time the city had a referendum relative to building? Didn't we have one prior to about the freeway freeway?
In 2000.
2000. And the voters then said?
No.
No, we don't want development on the freeway. As a result, I was in middle school, by the way. I was failing sixth grade. But don't worry, I made up for it and graduated early. I'm I'm I was I was a child. I hadn't. I was left to trust that my parents and the adults in the community had the best ideas for the community. But here we are, discussing the same thing 25 years later. And now it falls on my shoulders to make a decision, along with my colleagues and the rest of the community, if this referendum goes forward. Bankruptcy is not an option either, because the city has bills to pay. In fact, I have it on good authority that the County Sheriff's Office is set to get a pretty substantial raise that we're going to have to all pay for as as citizens of this community. They deserve the raise. You guys are hard workers, and certainly you should be compensated amongst the highest in the nation. The question is, can the city of Ukaypa afford the highest in the nation? The answer is, right now, overwhelmingly, no, we cannot. So the 2008 plan, if we, if this referendum goes through, the 2025 freeway corridor plan will be nullified, and a less restrictive warehouse overlay will be back to the the plan. So I agree, warehouses are bad. But make no mistake, as I went around town the last week and I was entering in and out of different places that had a sign, signature collector, I asked, who apparently I'm not that, my notoriety is not that great, because nobody recognized me as a councilman, by the way. I said, tell me about it. He said, we don't want warehouses. I said, it's great. So if we vote, if we, this goes through, there's no warehouses. That's right. But that's not right. If this goes through, there's more warehouses potentially. Am I am I missing, and please, if I'm wrong, stop me now, make it very public, and tell me I'm wrong. When are the 2008 model, we could have more warehouses than the two that potentially could be going through? Is that accurate? Yes. So, okay, Mr. City Attorney, that that can't be right. These folks are allowed to say that a a approval of the referendum means no warehouses, and we're just letting people believe that is to be accurate?
A common tactic of signature gatherers, not necessarily speaking about any particular individual in this case, is to find an emotional appeal when they're seeking to get someone to sign
Sure.
their their petition. In this case, there has been a concerted effort to tie the referendum on the freeway corridor specific plan update to the Pacific Oaks Project, a single project. As I've made clear in the impartial summary that was provided to the petitioners in this case, it, under California law, a legislative act, like the entire specific plan update, can be subject to referendum. But a specific project, in this case, the Pacific Oaks Project, it's not appropriate for that item to be subject to a referendum. And so it it it's a common thing that happens. I would I would not say that it is accurate to say that this will stop warehouses in the city of Ukaypa.
In fact, according to the 2008 general plan and the previously adopted plan, why we have a warehouse currently on the freeway is because it's allowed.
It is allowed under the 2008 freeway corridor specific plan, both on the far eastern side of the city, where the current warehouse is being developed, all the way to the current pumpkin patch property.
So, Mr. Preciado, you're a city engineer. I don't want to overinflate, so give me some realistic numbers based on what you've seen. How many warehouses could potentially go along the freeway in a very visible manner from the 2008 plan?
If we go back to to the 2008 plan, there are at least five other locations other than the location that the on the southeast that warehouses could go.
Anywhere that's red or purple on the map is a potential site for warehouses and other uses.
That that one accurately depicts in red and purple where, now, the purple on the south side of the 10 freeway near the opposite, the Wildwood Canyon Road intersection there, that that's the rest stop? Is that where that's at?
It's the rest stop area and then some area to the east of it.
Okay. So, but surely, the referendum would stop this as well. We can't build warehouses, because they said no warehouses if the referendum passes. So that would stop the warehouses here as well?
That is not an accurate statement.
But the shirt said no warehouses when they signed people up.
I I understand. It's hard to condense several hundred-page document down to the size of a T-shirt, council member.
Forgive my theatrics, this is what we're talking about, is the longevity and the health of our community. I agree with Mr. Duran. So I sought to find a a more restrictive way to combat possible warehouses and hide them and isolate them. And then, should a project become come forward, because if we don't have a project yet, right, this is a plan, this is a strategic plan. Should a project become come forward, and I've said this at least four times I can remember in in recent history, then this council would be in a position to maybe set some more ordinances in place, restricting vehicular commercial traffic during certain maybe hours, during with idle ordinances to prevent and prohibit idling from taking place. We can't ord- enact ordinances on a plane, excuse me, on a plan, that doesn't make sense, there's no project. This is this is a strategic plan that's that seeks, from from my one-fifth vote, seeks to restrict the ability to be inundated with warehouses and commercial development. I'll digress on the warehouses. I'm going to move forward to the next the next spot that I think we should talk about. Failure to meet the RENA obligations can trigger the builder's remedy. Actually, I dumped ahead. The 2025 freeway corridor specific plan update was partly designed, as you said, Ben, to help Ukaypa meet its state mandated. This isn't your mandate, Ben. You didn't come up with these numbers, but you're our city planner. You didn't plan this?
No, I was vocal in trying to advocate for the city to have more real estate numbers.
I thought so as well, yeah. So the state mandated regional housing needs allocation, also known as RENA, requires that we have 2,447 housing units here. But if we vote no, if the referendum goes through, we don't have to build 2,447 houses. Except for that's not true either. As we learned from your presentation, we're still on the hook for building 2,447 houses. Rather, the city doesn't build houses. Clearing the path forward for houses to be built in a realistic timeframe and with realistic resources approved by the the city, is that accurate?
Yes, and if I may clarify, so the RENA numbers we have is 2866 units, so it's actually higher. And then the freeway corridor is meant to, because the numbers probably won't be less in the future, is to continuously help us chip away at those numbers without undue rezonings across the board in the rest of the city.
According to the last census, we're roughly around 55,000 residents. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. A buildout, how many residents?
We are around 80,000-ish is the the total buildout, and certainly the freeway corridor is a big part of that.
What can we do to stop that?
We are unable to. So the state law doesn't allow cities to downzone pieces of property. And so we, whatever the zoning mitts is, is what we're kind of stuck with. And so if we have to make up other parts of the city to accommodate the arena, we can't necessarily downzone the specific plan either. So it it keeps adding.
I build out 80,000.
Yeah.
80,000 residents. 25,000 more people. And if you divide those 2,447 homes equally, which is a which is a tall ask, amongst all five districts, we have 489.4 homes need to be built in each district of our community in order to be compliant with this with our RENA allocation and not trigger the builder's remedy.
Over time, yes, it would be that. Certainly, the short term for the current housing cycles, the the approximately 500-ish. But certainly, if we're not able to count this, we're going to be continuously making up for the shortfall from what the freeway corridor was supposed to do in providing the housing.
And the 500 is the affordable housing.
500 affordable houses?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one that we have to focus on by 2029.
Okay. So summarize. We're on the hook for these houses. This is where this is exhausting for, I'm sure, the rest of my colleagues as well, but people ask for, they 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 call people I went to school with or people I grew up with, they'll call me and say, hey, Justin, did you really approve warehouses and 2,400 homes by the freeway? I don't like political answers, so they're asking, they're they're wanting a direct answer, yes or no? Yes. The answer is yes. It's a long answer if you give me a chance to explain it, because the answer is, I'm trying to choose what's best for the community. I didn't, I didn't choose this. When 80,000 residents was the number that was locked in, I was I was trying to figure out how to sneak into homeroom without my teacher realizing I was late. Okay, that I'm shackled as a as an elected official now, dealing with decisions that were made while I was still a child. I don't have, I don't have control over those decisions, though those were already made. What I have to do is try to make the best decision moving forward, so that my daughter is not one day potentially sitting up here going, why did my dad do what he did? And now I'm locked into a horrible thing, right? If, I'm going to talk everything through my mindset, because the mayor was right. There's a lot of pretty, pretty serious allegations that we're on the take, or somehow I'm accepting money, and I'm in the I'm in the the pocketbooks of these developers. If we had two warehouses buried behind a hill so I can't see them, that paves the way for future revenue development along the freeway by way of utility transfers, and when those projects come back to the council, which they will, we set up conditions of approval. We enact different municipal codes to ensure that our way of life is impacted as little as possible. I've seen it before. Most agencies, and I'm sure our law enforcement officers over here can attest, there's such a thing as commit commercial vehicle enforcement units in law enforcement. We don't have one, but we could, so that if we needed to have somebody going and checking idols taking place at any warehouses, if we need to say, hey, on this roadway, from the freeway to the entrance, commercial vehicle traffic is not allowed between these hours. We just don't allow it. Okay? We're mitigating a problem. Is the answer, the answer is this, the answer is really simple. We don't have warehouses, we don't build more houses. But that is an unrealistic pipe dream, we can't get there. So we have to try to mitigate and take, make the best decision we have. This council did that. By majority vote. The decision I made was to try to mitigate the damage, not not have a perfect world. The perfect world doesn't exist. This map allows for us to have a more restricted number of any of those horrible warehouses that Mr. Duran, Mr. Duran just spoke of. I agree with him. We should, we should not be opening our doors and saying, line them up. This was a decision made. Now, I have zero problem with the voters of this community exercising their constitutionally protected rights of a referendum. But please, before you vote, understand the consequence of your vote. It is not as simple as no warehouses or yes warehouses. Warehouses will be will be here either way. Now, do you want to have us litter with them? Or do you want to hide them and have them strategic in a place where we cannot see them? That is up, what's on the, going to be on the ballot, should this referendum go through. And that is why I applaud Mayor and his leadership for bringing this study session forward. It wasn't a study session, as it was suggested on the internet, that we are now second-guessing our decision and we're trying to gain favor with the community by trying to sell why we did it. It's to truly say, understand, if this progresses, we're going to be in a fundamentally different area than we are now, and I'm I'm genuinely concerned how that that's going to affect our community.
Mayor Bruton?
So if we kept the 2008 plan the way it is, how many houses are on that?
It was 2,445.
So more than the the one that they just voted on?
The update increases it by 25, so it's really just kind of rounding as you do the capacity. But we tried to maintain the same number of housing units in both plans.
So if it's kept the same, we're not going into each neighborhood and trying to put houses up, right?
It is a question of the viability of those units. So the the prior specific plan, because of the lack of development, plus where the market conditions are for what was proposed, those units are going to be deemed infeasible for development, so they can't be counted. Whereas the update was trying to look at where the market trends are, improving the infrastructure kind of obligation, so that that way, those sites could actually come to fruition and be counted in the housing.
So they're not counted right now?
Um, they we have about the five hundred ish, but that's with the assumption that the freeway corridor update gets uh approved was that.
So as far as the warehouses go and stuff, you have mega warehouses in the back and stuff. Now the warehouses, if we brought in on um two thousand eight, like a target and stuff, now you only have two truck bays instead of fourteen hundred? How many how many were the how many truck bays were gonna be in the one?
I don't remember the 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 number off the top of my.
I heard it was like fourteen hundred traveled or truck traveled or trips, right? Fourteen hundred trips a day? Is that what the number was?
The trip count, not.
I don't remember the the trip count, but uh the trip count and the number of bays are two different numbers.
Understandable. So if you had eight hundred and then you had, you know, two trucks coming in, you know, so you'd have a lot more than eighteen fourteen, about sixteen meters. My math is a little. I flunked sixth grade too. But the warehouses, you know, it's it's uh on on the two thousand eight one, it's you get warehouses no matter what. But the warehouses that if you choose to uh target as a warehouse, you know, it's just a retail warehouse, right? Home Depot's a warehouse as far as that goes. It's retail ones as well, and those help the city with with tax money and everything like that stuff. So if we kept that two thousand eight plan, you still have the housing development plus you could still have warehouses anywhere you want, right? In those red areas and the purple areas?
So again, um with the old specific plan, um there's no guarantee that the the commercial will be, I think, the warehouse structures you're thinking of it similar to what happened at uh Cataline Road or Cataline Lane in seventh places. It could be one of the larger warehouse kind of fulfillment type structures instead. But again, the housing units themselves um would be at risk. So while the number of units stays the same, that old plan doesn't count towards um won't be considered as a viable solution for the arena um without some sort of other intervention happening to uh make that happen.
What kind of intervention?
Um, either a lot of uh infrastructure being added in um to there, but with the densities that are proposed um in the old plan because of how the market conditions are, they're probably still not quite viable. So we'll still have to probably upzone parts of the freeway corridor.
And they could do that. If they brought a project to you, they can up zone it.
An applicant could, but for the housing element, the city has to be the one that facilitates that at the start.
And then the warehouse that you have over off Calamase Boulevard and stuff, how much uh money is that bringing into the city right now?
Um, I haven't seen what the reallocated property tax rules are, and then I know uh they're working with a tenant to get kind of moving in. So uh right now it's currently vacant since it just finished construction.
So you have a tenant possibly moving in?
Um, I believe they have been negotiating um with a tenant, and so I think they're working on the the plans for it, but um that's kind of the status of what.
And they got the trucking entrance and everything like that, the trucking uh entrance and exit um all. Everything's done on that?
Yes.
So a tenant could move in there and we can have business as usual, right?
In that one, yeah. Yeah, it's pretty much ready to go. Um, there is future improvements for the the freeway onramps that they're gonna be working on, but that's kind of a a secondary component. But there the building is finalized.
How long you been waiting for somebody to come in? Are actually, how long has it been ready, tenant ready?
If I may, the the certificate of occupancy was issued in May and that gave the developer of the warehouse a green light to start negotiations with the tenant. And it's our understanding that they're uh negotiating with various tenants on what improvements to make to the inside of the warehouse so they can propose a plan to do the um the interior improvements for that tenant.
And that only brings in property tax for for the city, right? It's not retail at all.
Uh, right. So so in that scenario, um a tenant or not a tenant does not have a significant impact to the city's uh revenue stream because it's the assessed value of the building that generates property taxes. And so as soon as the county assessor uh reassesses the value of that property and it hits the tax rule, that's the revenue stream to the city regardless of the timing of the tenant's occupancy.
And then the two big warehouses back there, that only generate, you said last time it was only seven hundred seven hundred and what ninety two thousand dollars worth of uh of uh um property tax, once the two big mega buildings get done?
It would be dependent on the assessed value of a completed building.
But you had a number there for us.
Yeah, so we get we get uh roughly twenty three percent of the general levy in that area. And so whatever the assessed value was, that one percent of the general levy, we would get twenty three percent of that number.
And the warehouses, are they um responsible for the streets that that their trucks go in and mash, you know, mess up as they go in? Or is is the warehouses or is the city responsible for it?
You're talking about the the construction of the streets or the maintenance?
The maintenance of the streets as it.
So the CFD that would be formed will include a caplation for street maintenance on it. So it will be part of one of the revenue streams that the city gets is to address that that level of service. Um, I do want to note uh with warehouses, um the numbers can provide are tied to property tax just because if there is a point of sale tenant, then we get property uh sales tax as well, but um to provide a more conservative analysis, um that wasn't factored in, but certainly um I think it's every city's dream to to at least have the point of sale occur as well.
That revenue stream again is is forward looking. Uh, the backwards looking revenue stream, the diff program, the um the development of the freeway corridor has always been um uh part of the part of the formula. And so a a key part would be the completion of that plan. And so there's been questions on uh when will we pay ourselves back on the interfund loans? Um, and that will occur when that when developments like that occur in in that area. That will complete the plan and the city will then repay itself for the previous funding.
So the fourteen, one lump sum of fourteen million dollars, we get, we pay off a bunch of stuff and everything and that goes towards just the general fund and we.
Not not the general fund. No, that the diff uh funds are restricted and so they're not part of the general fund. They go back to the buckets that are are funding the diff program. And the uh the entire outflow of the diff program in the freeway corridor is eighty million dollars, Ben, is that right?
Yes.
A cost of eighty million dollars. So the fourteen million dollars for that project would offset the eighty million dollars of cost for the um entire um uh freeway corridor infrastructure.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Since sorry, how much does the diff owe the general fund currently, the diff fund? Because we borrowed from it.
It's 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 a moving target. As of last, uh our last audited financials, which was six thirty twenty four, the number was a little over uh twenty million dollars. I think twenty five million dollars. Um, I am anticipating that uh with the six thirty twenty five audited financial statements we're in the uh the fifteen million dollar range.
Because we're still currently paying with other with other development in the town, we're paying we're slowly paying it back?
We're slowly paying it back. Um, and and so the 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 that number is the cash flow difference um at any given time. We also have a bunch of projects that are in the queue that we're building all the time. So the entire diff program is incurring lots of cost. The number that the general fund has um uh forwarded on the cash flow side, I'm anticipating it's gonna be around fifteen million dollars for six thirty twenty five.
Thank you.
Mr. Lee. So it's not like that. I I don't think that everybody's against warehouses as far as, you know, if we bring in retail at Target. I know that we've we voted out, um I think it was a, what did we vote out? Home Depot before?
We voted out in two thousand Home Depot and Walmart.
So we voted out that.
And then we've lost Target and we've lost Costco.
Right.
Due to cost of infrastructure.
Mayor Protem, I I just wanted to point out, under the freeway corridor specific plan, there is retail uses, regional serving retail, and there are warehouses. And those are two different uses contemplated under the plan. Now, they're both allowed in the same areas. The red and purple, and they're both subject to a conditional use permit. So they both get approved in the same way. They're both allowed in the in the same areas. But I don't think if a Target, just as an example, came forward, we would process that as a warehouse. I think we would process that as regional serving.
Yeah, but that's what people people look at it as far as it as a warehouse. That's what I mean, it's a retail warehouse. That's most.
I can I can understand what you're saying, especially if it's like a Costco.
Right.
Uh, I I get it. I'm just saying from a from a planning perspective that because, like you said, there's a huge difference in the traffic that's coming to and from them. But I think one of the things that you'd find interesting, and I actually found fascinating when I've looked at some of the environmental documents, if you look at something like a Costco, a Costco generates more traffic than than a warehouse. Uh, and anyone who's been to one of the Costcos nearby probably knows that, right? When you when you see the amount of vehicles that are going in and out. Anyway, food for thought.
Yeah, on the most part, I mean, it's it does car traffic and stuff, not diesel traffic as far as that goes.
That's that's correct, sir.
Yeah. But I mean, that's that's like I said, I'm I'm I don't think, you know, when I don't particularly care for the big warehouses back there and stuff. I mean, as far as warehouses, as far as Targets and Costcos and everything like that, people say, I mean, that's, I think, more doable for the our citizens. We I listen to, you know, what my constituents constituents say in my area and stuff, and they're all against that, you know, but they'd like to see it. I mean, we missed out on a few of the big players and stuff, but there's other big players out there and stuff, you know? I mean, I've heard hospitals bring in a ton of money for the cities. So I mean, there's an opportunity for, you know, a hospital to come over here because we have one in San Gregorio and one in Redlands. You know, and if somebody's locking up here in Ucaipa, that's a long ways to go.
And I do want to know, kind of going back to your point is, you know, the the term warehouse is a pretty loose term. There's a there's a wide variety. And so even kind of like medical labs and other stuff is something that is allowed in the the business part stuff. And so some of those kind of biotech type firms are s- are allowed with the the update as well. So try to encapsulate that that wide variety of potential.
I just wanted the citizens to know that if we kept the two thousand eight one, we still have housing options in that area and stuff, right?
Yeah, I think I think what staff is trying to do this evening in a discussion format of saying that council starting even nine two thousand nine ten all the way up to twenty twenty was grappling with the state mandates coming down. And they they knew that um starting in, you know, nineteen twenty, nothing was moving on this plan. And so the council at the time really had to pivot because they had to figure out, well, if it's not going to be built on its own due to the cost of infrastructure, then we need to show that um the staff went for council gave direction for staff to uh go after grant funding to help offset the cost of relooking at the specific plan and and doing the EIR updates. And in addition, figuring out maybe in taking a step back and looking at it, maybe it's better. No one wants warehousing. I I think a lot of people in this community, you know, we like the amenities of some of the larger stores like that, but at the end of the day, council heard the community and that's why they gave direction to staff to adjust the plan to locate the warehouse behind the hills so it's not seeing in the view corridor to show the state that we are trying to develop a plan that could actually be buildable. And in addition, knowing that at least putting the housing on the south side of the freeway, yet it annoys some people in Redlands we get, but it allowed Ucaipa to preserve their neighborhoods where they live on the north side of the freeway. And and so the general plan is trying to reflect that. There are true impacts because if it reverts back to the two thousand eight plan, the state has already recognized that it's unbillable. So now we gotta look at pivoting pivoting again. If the referendum is successful, where do you want to put those five hundred affordable units? It's not to threaten anybody. It's just to say that you have to then look at it like the councils had to do back in two thousand to say, okay, community, depending on how you want to vote, this could literally be if there's a vacant piece of land near near where you live, potentially there could be affordable housing units there. What we don't want is staff or people to say, but I didn't know that. They didn't tell me that. This is about educating people. This is not about threatening people. This is about telling the community, grandfathers of and mothers, I guess, and and council who've had to sit in the chairs that you have been have wrapped. They have this has been a struggle for the city council for councils of all the past because it's a hard conversation. We don't like the state to tell us what to do. We like our rolling hills and and cattle grazing on them. And and when state starts to dip their fingers into Ucaipa, it's a very adversarial thing. And people in the public keep saying, you haven't studied it enough. You haven't studied enough. This has been studied pre incorporation. It was highlighted on the county's plan. The councils of the past and council of present has studied this consistently and grappled with the same issues. So if you go back to the oh eight plan, the state's gonna recognize and we're gonna recognize it. Probably won't be developed. Maybe that's a strategy. But I don't know. Is that one to gamble on?
And if if I can, if I can jump in here, you know, the reason that the state has all of these mandates and tests on reasonableness, realisticness, feasibility is because other cities throughout the state, perhaps acting not entirely in good faith, would say, okay, we'll zone land for all the housing the state says we need. And they would zone it in places that it could not possibly be built. And it was the way for those communities to sort of fight back and preserve that amount of local control. As a city attorney, local control is my mantra. It's the thing that I want to provide to this council. I want to provide to the community. Um, but like the city manager said, we would not be doing this council or this community service if we told you something and it turned out to not be true. The the concern with um you know, not finding a solution to the housing issues in the freeway corridor specific plan area is that we are rapidly gonna be entering into a second planning cycle. Twenty twenty nine is much closer than we all think. Especially when you talk about cycles of housing. And if we have if we have these sites continuing to be vacant and undeveloped, that's one strike against us in the potential feasibility. But the other thing that uh I didn't hear mentioned was infrastructure availability. Uh, so under government code section six five five eight three point two, one of the other factors that the state is going to look at is are the sites that we said this is where the housing's gonna go? Do those sites have access, either actual access to water, sewer and other utilities? Or is there a reasonable plan in place to get them access um to those utilities? So one of the things that you'll notice between the twenty twenty five plan and the two thousand eight plan is the housing in the two thousand eight plan is tucked behind the hills. It's literally as far as possible to get the utilities to that area. But if you move to the two thousand twenty five plan, you have two large industrial parcels that are now in that area next to the sewage treatment plant that are gonna be bringing utilities to themselves. And when they're bringing utilities to themselves, they're bringing utilities to all the areas that are along the way. And so we will be able to say to the state, not only have we attempted to correct the issue with the feasibility, but we've also addressed the infrastructure issue. So I just wanted wanted to make sure that that was uh something that that you were aware of because it will be challenging, not impossible. State's always watching. It'll be challenging for us to continue to defend the ability of this jurisdiction to have local control over housing if we cannot demonstrate feasible paths towards building the number of units that the state has mandated we build.
So you gave them twelve years, right, to 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 start and finish their project? Is it twelve years, six years? How how many? The warehouses?
So it would be the freeway quarter has um approval for up to twelve years with extensions. And so there are provisions for it. Um, doesn't necessarily mean that we'll take that long or maybe the last phase will be there, but certainly um that is part of it.
So we don't get any kind of infrastructure there as long as they're not building. What if they don't build out?
In terms of if that project doesn't move forward?
Yeah.
Um, then it'd be up to another project in line to to help facilitate that.
And you and we locked it in for twelve years for right now and stuff, right? If they don't, we had we give them twelve years to start.
Well, right now the the CUP is for three for three years with additional three year extensions up to twelve years.
Up to twelve years. So if they decide that they don't want to do this project and they just drag it out for twelve years, we don't get infrastructure over there until they start breaking ground. Is that right?
Uh, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So we're putting a lot of eggs in one basket for that for that to uh come about. come about for us to get infrastructure over there. We don't have a sec- uh, a plan B on this, do we?
So there's a few different, um, avenues. So one thing to note is the twelve years is they have to be completely done by then. So it's not necessarily starting. Um, two, uh, council did implement, uh, a E I F D, uh, enhanced infrastructure financing district, um, over that. So that does provide some opportunity for additional infrastructure investments, but it does need to be repaid back by the tax increment financing. So keeping the land viable for development is a critical part of that strategy is, we can't just spend the money and then hope it comes and actually has to, you know, support development and ensure that that comes forward.
The, the, uh, the mantra for Ucaipa has always been, um, um, don't, don't use city money for this. And so some of the other deals that were mentioned that, that didn't go through, it comes down to money. Who's gonna pay for what? Um, and a lot of the, 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 the big box retailers, they're in an industry where, um, um, they're sought after. People will cut them a better deal, more negotiating power. Um, they have to take less out of their pocket because people want them there. Um, whereas, uh, industrial, it's, it's a different industry and they're, and they're willing to pay for some of it. So, so there's a lot of irons in the fire. There's a lot of different ways to say, how can we get infrastructure to the corridor? The, the city staff for years has, has been putting these things together. The E I F D is one of them. Um, however, um, uh, the, the idea of don't use city money, use somebody else's money. Um, we can't force, uh, projects to, uh, submit plans. Uh, we, we don't, we, 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 they have to submit and then we evaluate those. Um, but, but a lot of the, um, the opportunities that the city can control is city money funding the infrastructure. And that's, that's, it's expensive and cities never said, yeah, we, it's a good idea to spend our own money to do those things. So.
And I wouldn't wanna spend our own money on that either. I'm just saying if there's a, you know, we're, we're putting all this in and if they don't, just they don't build it, um, then what? You know, we, we go off what ifs all the time. I mean, we just, you guys passed the twenty twenty five, you know, freeway quarter specific plan to get all your arena numbers and everything like that, to get the infrastructure and stuff. We don't get that infrastructure over there and they don't build, then what?
So certainly, again, probably similar to the two thousand eight plan, if nothing ever happens, then we'll have to pivot again. Uh, certainly, you know, plans aren't meant to sit on a shelf. And so, um, part of the plan does include with the update is kind of reevaluate where things are working, where things aren't, to make sure that it does come to fruition. Um, just because we don't wanna be in a spot, you know, seventeen years down and nothing has happened. The goal with the update was really to make sure that development is feasible and provide a mechanism so that we can pivot in the plan, within the framework of the plan as it stands. So then that way, if market conditions do change, we're able to be resilient to that versus, um, a lot of time not happening like the two thousand eight plan had.
I know, I was long-winded, sorry.
That's right. Okay, I've got a few things and might are kind of more topical, hitting different things that have come up. Um, on social media a while back, someone posted something along the lines of Cherry Valley, Beaumont, Banning, Calamasa, all these communities are building a lot of homes recently. Because they've built so many homes, there's so much growth and growing pains in the region here. We should be able to do some sort of deferment where we don't have to build our numbers. Is that, is that a thing? I don't, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm, I'm, I'm airing it because apparently there is some thought out there that we could just put a stop to it and we don't have to do that for a while.
Yeah, that is not a thing. That is not how state law is, um, with the housing planning. Each city is assigned their, their number and kind of irrespective of what the neighbors doing, uh, we're obligated to do our share of that.
And what kind of timeframe, thank you by the way, and what kind of timeframe? Once the state determines that a plan isn't feasible, what kind of timeframe do they give us to come up with a, a feasible plan? So they say, okay, the two thousand eight plan wasn't good, or now they, and let's say, uh, you know, this two thousand twenty five plan doesn't work. And they come back and they say, okay, that's not feasible, cause you didn't get the infrastructure. What kind of timeframe do they normally give us to try to come up with some sort of a pivoted plan, as you would say?
So there's probably kind of two kind of timelines that, that we are responsible for. So every year we do the annual progress report. And so that gets submitted to the state saying, here's the programs we're supposed to be doing. Here's the status we've done on it. And so they're looking, did you meet your end of the bargain or not? And then every eight years is the update to the housing element. So we have to go through a very comprehensive analysis of what happened in the last cycle, what has worked, what hasn't worked, and then what is our, our process to do it? State law keeps getting much more complicated on this. Um, uh, I think the joke was, you know, two thousand twenty nine is not that far away. Uh, I, as the city planner, are very cognizant of that. And I'm already trying to think of how I'm uh, facilitate the next housing element update, because it's not going to be easier this next time. And there was a lot of sparring with the state uh, to get the plan. We got certified in the first place without the, the, the potential uh, issues that would have come from if, uh, the state was, you know, had the strong arm on that. And so uh, really trying to make sure that, you know, as we kind of look into net cycles that we're planning ahead and we have a good strategy for, for that. So it'll be every eight years, it's kind of the, the master strategy. And then the state can also set a requirement like every four years and go, hey, we're gonna reevaluate this at this time as well. And so, um, we're trying to avoid that, just so that we have a little bit more autonomy on achieving the outcomes that we're trying to do.
Okay.
Mayor, to answer your question, the fastest pathway that H C D could take to, from a finding a violation to a withdrawal of their certification or decertification, as it's called, the fastest track is thirty days. That's how fast they can move if they want to. Uh, in practice, they move slower than that. Uh, there's notices of violation, there's inquiry, there's back and forth with staff, there's an attempt to bring forward something, uh, that would, would cure it. Um, and so I, I don't anticipate that kind of timeline being used, but that is possible.
So in that thing of thought, if it wasn't, uh, let's say it was moving at a fast rate like that, and the numbers weren't obtainable, is that when that builder's remedy could come into play?
Once we no longer have a certified housing element, that is when the builder's remedy comes into play. And, you, you know, again, the, the goal is to educate, the goal is not to fear longer. So like, I don't think that this is the most likely path, but it is a possible path. And if it happens, I don't want people to say, you didn't tell us this was possible. The H C D could find, for example, if the referendum did go through, that the city was no longer complying with its own program, with the own programs that we had told H C D that we would do. We told them we would update the freeway quarter specific plan to address these problems. They could find us in violation and decertify us as soon as thirty days. I don't think that that's the most likely path, but it is possible.
Okay.
In the worst case, that could be up to, uh, thirty units per acre. Up to.
Oh, okay. So I used an illustration and people kind of got, I don't think they liked it, but I was just trying to give an example. So maybe it was a bad example, but in that builder's remedy, if they were to come in and say that, uh, a project had to go somewhere in the city, whatever that number is, five hundred maybe, um, and if you do, would you say thirty, thirty doors to an acre?
Thirty units per acre up to.
Thirty, uh, okay.
For the builder's remedy.
So theoretically, if they wanted to build a multi-level structure, they could and we wouldn't have any say in it. And we wouldn't even have any say in architectural review as to how that would look. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it kind of suspends our development standards, including kind of that. So we'd be at the mercy of hoping the developer was uh, playing nice, uh, through that process, um, um, kind of with those limitations. And so it certainly makes it a lot trickier for us, you know, presenting a project, saying, hey, this doesn't meet what our code should be, but we can't deny it. And so it's kind of a, you know, engagement theater for.
But if they wanted to push it through, when it comes down to where the rubber meets the road, we wouldn't have any bite in the fight to be able to prevent them from doing what they wanted to do if they wanted to push that limit.
So the, the builder's remedy suspends our ability to enforce development standards. Uh, one of the most common development standard I've heard spoken about in the city is the one house per acre development standard that is applicable up on the north bench. Um, so you could see density dramatically increase. Setbacks, so we currently have setbacks, uh, building heights, aesthetics, things like that. Those are the types of things that we would no longer be able to enforce until we got our housing element certified once again.
Okay. And then when it comes to infrastructure, you brought this up earlier, uh, it might've been the city manager, but somebody brought up the if the doors get moved to another location in the city, then you have to look at infrastructure and see if that's even available there. And if so, great. If not, then we gotta figure out what it's gonna cost to get infrastructure to that area for those homes, correct?
Yeah, and so it'll be readjusting both our capital improvement program and the development impact fee to keep pace for that, or essentially to try and catch up to, um, those decisions.
To one of my council members' points earlier, we do have a little, you know, we've kind of got a little bit of our eggs in a one basket, but we only have one basket right now. We don't have a lot of other options. If this company and this project goes through and they pull the infrastructure to the other side of the freeway, minimum cost is thirty-eight to forty million dollars. If that wasn't funded by somebody like them, um, what is the feasibility of like a, a, a shopping center coming in that would have the ability to do that versus their project cost? Is that, would that, would that infrastructure be more, uh, cost preventative to them than their, than their project? I mean, would it, would it, uh, the expense be bigger?
So I think, yes, and I think it comes down to market feasibility. So if they have another site that's nearby, that's cheaper to build, um, and certainly with greater certainty in what the process is, they're probably gonna pit that over another place that's a lot more expensive and more difficult, uh, to get there. And certainly, as an example, you know, where the, the business park locations are hidden behind the hills, you're not gonna have a heavy freeway oriented retail center that's wanna build hidden from view. They wanna be in the prime spot, which is you get all that regional traffic that's moving back and forth. Uh, it's a lot easier to capture that traffic for your retail use than it is to have them go into town somewhere else.
Okay. So let's say that doesn't go through. They don't pull their infrastructure over there and we've got to figure out another place to put these doors and maybe it doesn't work. So now we have to figure out how to make that work. So how do we fund that? If we had to fund that, would that be a bond? They get voted on by the public and then the, the public has to come up with paying for forty million dollars worth of minimum cost for infrastructure to go the south side of the freeway that, I mean, they don't want more taxes, but, I mean, that's the alternative, right?
Uh, so, uh, revenue bonds are certainly an option. Uh, the city would structure it as lease revenue bonds where we would lea- we would basically put up all the city property that we have as collateral, uh, in the form of leases. Uh, and the revenue from those leases where the city is essentially paying itself, uh, would become the debt service for the bonds. Uh, if you're talking about thirty-five million dollars, I just so happen to be familiar with what the annual cost of about thirty-five million dollars in the current market, uh, is, it's about two million dollars a year in annual debt service uh, until twenty sixty-something or other. Um, and so, uh, that would be two million dollars out of your general fund uh, that you would no longer be able to program for other things. You'd have to program it for debt service. Uh, and so that, that is one possibility. Uh, the other possibility is working with, for example, the water district. Um, the water district, uh, could potentially do, uh, revenue bonds, uh, paid for by fees. Uh, but that would be obviously entirely up to the water district board, uh, whether that's something that they wanted to pursue. Um, and that would be supported by fees that are paid by water users in the city. So general taxes, so sales taxes, property taxes would pay for the city's debt service. And that would be something that's paid for by the entire community. I, I have heard some in the community say, well, why don't you just make a C F D? Uh, and I, if it was as simple as just saying, there's a C F D, uh, uh, and they will pay for it, um, that would be fantastic. Um, C F Ds are used when you are gonna have a massive area that, that is gonna be developed, and it is gonna be developed in a relatively short timeframe. Uh, when those bonds for the C F Ds go out to the market, the first thing the market does is look at how quickly is the development going to occur and will it be sufficient to support it? Um, I think that you would be challenged, uh, in, in this market, uh, to be able to form a C F D uh, for areas that have, are not even conceptually, uh, in, in a planning stage for residential and, and get those C F Ds to be able to issue bonds, uh, to fund any kind of infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think the revenue aspect of things is, i- is a, a big deal too. So we let, this gives us the opportunity for other things to come in. If that revenue goes away, I don't know where else we're gonna get revenue in our city. Do you have any brilliant ideas where we get enough revenue coming into the city that that takes off the board? How do you get revenue in the city that's enough that funds a police department, a fire department, public service type things? I mean, I don't have all the contract stuff memorized, but that's quite a bit of changes between the fire department and the sheriff's department right there. Um, we need some things that are gonna help chip away at that.
Yeah, um, but, uh, they, the, the short answer is no, I don't have any brilliant ideas. Um, the, the, the model, um, all along has been, um, get the freeway corridor developed and that's gonna, that's gonna fix everything. We can always pivot, um, depending, um, on, on the new challenge of the day. So we can pivot and, and figure something out. I would anticipate if, if this is not going to be developed, um, that it would require, um, a kind of a back to the drawing board of what we perceive Ucaipa um, and the needs, the operating needs of Ucaipa to be and reevaluate that entire question. Um, and so, I, I, I wouldn't say it's, it's gonna be piece by piece to see what stays, what, what goes. It would just be, here's the new reality of Ucaipa. It's not what we thought for the last thirty years. It's going to be something different. We're back to the drawing board on, on, on bringing everything back. And so, um, it, it, it's not a, it's not a one-to-one. It's not a, if we don't get it here, is there another spot? No, we've got one basket. That, that is the basket. It's always been the basket. Um, and so it would be a reevaluation of what we are perceiving the community needs to be at that point.
All right. Thank you. I've got a lot more, but I think my other councilman's one of us talked, so councilman Miller, it's up to you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Um, Mr. Venable, I really liked your idea of a hospital. Of people my age, we could really use a hospital here with medical facilities and everything it would bring in. I think that's a good idea. Maybe we should pursue that, staff. Um, I attended a panel discussion last week presented by the N A I O P Inland Empire Group. I can never pronounce that word. This panel consisted of key industry leaders representing industrial, office, retail, multifamily and land markets. The industrial panelists commented that there is a push to get people off of the freeways and provide more white to- uh, colored jobs in our ear- area, excuse me. Currently, there's thirty million square feet of office space in industrial buildings occupied by corporate America. Office buildings are at a shortage because since COVID, buildings have been bought by the county and medical entities. And many of those jobs pay, uh, six-figure salaries. So industrial is a thriving business and one of the best in the world, right in this region. He ended with, this is the true narrative of industrial, not the trucks and the pollution. The same evening, I attended the state of the county event. During this presentation, the different county supervisors talked about the many opportunities happening in their area. Warehouses can also become vocational schools, training facilities for automotive, water supply management, electrician, green building construction, open to all backgrounds with job placement support. These types of facilities can prepare our high school students as well as adults maybe that wanna make a change. And provide them with a career change for careers in metal fabrication, welding, digital design, plumbing, you know, all the trades out there that we really need. This could provide accelerated pathways from education to employment in as little as four months. These type of opportunities would allow our children to get married, have a family, buy a home and stay in the community in which they were raised. And also, even if we had, um, a warehouse or a building that had retail, we could, um, make sure that they offered, uh, merchandise for sale. I mean, you know, if it, like, isn't it Skechers over in Marina Valley? Don't they have a area where you can go by? So that would generate tax. The point I'm trying to make is warehouses can be something different that doesn't invite or involve a lot of trucks, doesn't jeopardize our health. Diesel trucks are actually on the way out in this state. And in fact, while I was waiting for the meeting to start, I didn't read the whole article, but what I saw was that there's a large hub being built in San Bernardino for electric trucks to be able to charge them. So, and look at the number of Amazon delivery trucks anymore that are electric. And I recently attended the grand opening of the ZM Truck Factory in Fontana. And they assemble electric vehicles there. So instead of making all these accusations, I'm addressing the public on this. Instead of making these accusations in regard to the city giving out false information, let's look ahead and think long term.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Miller?
Thank you. Well said by all the council members tonight and to use a Steve term, I don't want to relitigate the whole meeting from August twenty-fifth because we, we've been through that. But really the study sessions, as the mayor said, was to discuss what if. We should always have a what-if plan if, if the referendum went through. And what I heard tonight, again, that this plan had been in place all along with councils before us of how we were going to have some sustainability in the future. And really all them buckets that were being filled for development one day was based on this plan. And I think without redoing the whole thing again, yes, warehouses is a word that gets gaslit. And I've been, you know, obviously we've heard the last few weeks with all the keyboard warriors writing what they're writing. But if you really look at what it is, it's a housing issue for us too right now. I don't know, Stephen, if you're aware, you know, Irvine tried to fight it a little bit. And what happened to Irvine?
I think you know the answer, council member. Why don't you tell us?
And the state did what they did, you know, and, and I think, you know, one of my questions when we first started talking about, I said, oh, come on, what can the state really do? Well, Ben, we know the answer to that, right? They're going to do what they're going to do. And I, I just think that as you showed the map of the different areas that have the most vacant land, well, right away I look at District One, you know, and there's a lot of vacant land up there. And I don't know how our folks would feel about that if we had to put some housing up there, but that's a contingency if the referendum goes through. I thank the mayor for, at the beginning of his comments of maybe straightening out some information that's been out here about our integrity and credibility. I know we stand for the best we can and we try to do the right thing. It's always easy to just say we're a bunch of crooks or whatever, but that's really not legitimate and we know that. Our friends and, and our colleagues that know us know that's not true, but I'm not going to get too much into that. First Amendment, you can say what you want about us. But the state mandates are real. Would you say that, Ben, for me, Phil?
Yeah.
They're right. They're real. Okay, so we have a housing issue, right? If you think about housing and affordability factor, we have young people that we would like to have work and play and be in our city and be able to afford some housing too, right? I, if you're a young person right now and making an okay wage, it's hard to buy a house. It's hard to even get an apartment right now. I would like to see our own young people that go through our local high school to maybe our community college and have a trade or something to be able to live, work and have a great life here in Ucaipa. I think we agree with that. I think nowadays, if you try to buy a home in some of the areas that we're fortunate enough to live in, it's hard to do. So housing's an issue. We know that. Also, a lot of these projects, I, I think one of the comments that I was commenting on is because I said it simply, it's an overlay. Well, it is an overlay. This whole project, the twenty-twenty-five freeway quarter specific plan is the overlay. No matter what project goes through, it still has to go through a process to be approved, as my council member Beaver said, who was very cogent and articulate about, when you talked about this. Whatever comes to us or the planning commission, I see Dennis Miller's back here. It still has to go through a process which conditions can be put on. This is merely the overlay to provide the future of what it could look like. If you, without rehashing everything, we're talking, really, the last plan was twenty, twenty, twenty oh eight. Now we're twenty twenty-five. We finally got this thing moving. I even saw a little daylight with the mayor pro tem here talking about warehouses a little bit, so that encouraged me. I agree. I'd love to see a Bass Pro Shops or something like that too. I agree. The little difference in the warehousing, I agree. The different types, but it would be nice to see that. But in the end, we have to think about sustainability for the community. And that really means we know, maybe from our law enforcement experience, contracts are going up. Fire department too. We know them contracts. You know how much it costs for us just to pay for a fire truck. These things are not going to go down, so you have to project out what you're going to do. And I think the city's been planning this for a long time for our financial stability. Prior councils, good people that have made good decisions over the years, we're just continuing forward. I think if we, we just really sit about and think, if we didn't, what would the, just the diff fees, for example, how much would the diff fees go up if this project didn't go, percentage-wise for other developers? Maybe could you just give me a ballpark? Would they double?
Losing a large chunk of land, especially for the drainage, because it's based on future acres, acres of development. Yeah, losing a big bucket of future growth means that that window of projects to pay for becomes a lot more narrow.
It'd be huge. And I'm sure they would not like that. It would be hard to try to develop certain projects in this town. Can you give me an example recently of any communities around us that had the builder's remedy? Is it happened recently around that we're aware of? So when people say, well, does that really happen? Do we have any examples of that?
Definitely more towards LA and Orange County. They've run into that. So I think Yorba Linda, there's a number of, and definitely the, the articles you read of them, it was not a painless process for them.
It was painful, you know? You know, they say you can't fight City Hall or the government sometimes, but there are certain stipulations that our state puts on things. We may not like it. We don't agree with it, but there are certain things we have to do. And we have to think of the whole, our fifty-five thousand residents that we have here and how we're going to move forward. I got a bunch of random notes here, so I'll just actually about stories of cities balking and what happens. Also, the culture. I think what's been great about our previous councils, they have seen this in the future to develop, to finally get to this point where we're at. We just happen to be the council in seat right now to finally see this across the finish line or the goal line. And, and to finally get this to happen. There's a lot of information out there, clearly. I had an example of some friends that I know, they were at a fall league baseball game, little league game, and there was somebody out there talking about warehouses and the person stood up that I know and says, no, that's really not true. What's going on with the freeway quarter specific plan? This is what it's about. And some of the fans liked it and some didn't, but that's what's out in the community right now. That's why this study session was important, so people can hear if they're listening. I don't know how many we have online. You know, this is really what we're dealing with. I, I agree with Justin and Judy and everybody that said, hey, this is America. You can have your right to go vote and, and based off the information you have. And if it does happen a certain way, then we have to plan ahead. And that's all we're doing. Even though there was some other rhetoric that we were, that, you know, the cart, you know, we were a little too late, but that's really not what we were doing. I think the council has taken this very serious. I know our staffs work very hard. We have a bright, articulate staff that does a good job. I know you guys have been working on this for years and I'm sure you're frustrated. I'm sure you're frustrated. You won't admit it, but I'm sure you're frustrated over the years. So just stay to it. Just stick to it. I know that things may change and if they do, then us as a council are going to have to reevaluate. If the referendums go through, let's just be honest, then we're going to have to reevaluate what we're going to do. Tonight was the first, okay, here are your options. I mean, that's business and that's the way it goes. We just got to be able to do it together as a team and to try to move forward. And I'll end with, I know this council, we may disagree on certain things, but I know our hearts for the city. We talk about it all the time. We do care about what happens. You know, we, we have different ways of getting there sometimes, but we do care about what happens. And we care about our staff and we care about the people of this town. So I'll just say that. We're going to do, make the best decision we can with the best information we have. But thank you guys for bringing this to us and some different, just data so we know, so we can make good decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, staff. I appreciate we've had some good questions and dialogue this evening. For me personally, you know, to the public, if there's somebody that wants to sit down and talk or has questions or concerns, reach out to me. I don't mind meeting with you. You don't have to agree with me, but if you want to sit down and talk, we can. I'm not opposed to that. I'm not going to put up with threatening. But I will listen and love their points of view. So staff, thank you. With that, we are now moving on to our added item. I believe that is Landon.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for reviewing and considering this item before you tonight. With respect to the emergency work that's taking place after the significant rainfall and subsequent mud and debris flows we experienced last Thursday afternoon, the rainfall that occurred up on Ucaipa Ridge there above Oakland and in the Forest Falls area resulted in mud and debris flows in Oakland Creek, reaching Ucaipa's city limits around three fifteen. I was there with staff and our PD and, and fire folks. And once again, like we saw with Tropical Storm Hillary in twenty twenty-three, as that material and the flooding approached the small culvert located at Shigal right near our city limits there, got plugged with debris. And once again, unfortunately, that, that flow diverted out into Oakland Road and all the way down and settled near Pendleton Road intersection. We had a really clear idea of, of that and what that would look like since we had been through that before. Our Public Works crews, you know, in coordination with PD and fire, worked to close the roadways immediately for safety and, and start responding. We knew immediately we'd need more resources and equipment and operators to try to respond and, and get these areas safe and opened up again for the public for emergency access. With our active contracts that we have in place for on-call emergency construction and maintenance services originally executed back in twenty twenty-three, just before Hillary at that time, we reached out to two of our contractors right away to respond and begin emergency work the following morning. They mobilized. These were the same contractors that responded after Tropical Storm Hillary for, for very similar emergency work that was taking place. That'd be Jeremy Harris and MCC equipment. So, and they, they also had the same personnel to be familiar with what was needed to, to respond as quickly as possible. With the approval of the recommendations that are before you tonight with this report, it essentially reloads the budget so that we can pay these contractors for the work that occurred over the weekend. There will be work continuing. It's ongoing this week to make sure those roadways and drainage courses are operating safely as we prepare for what hopefully won't happen again. It also reloads the Three Peaks Corporation budget to approximately twenty thousand. The idea with this item is to kind of reestablish as we finish this work up this week, those five on-call contracts with about twenty thousand available balance so that we can be prepared should another emergency like this take place again. It's been five years and we've, we've heard since the El Dorado Fire and Apple Fires, it can take up to seven years for an area to fully recover. We've seen, seen, unfortunately, it's still, still taking time to recover. Just a quick status of the work, we're continuing to, to clean the roadways and the drainage courses that were inundated. Doing what we can to get those roadways opened up before the weekend. We know it's apple season and, and people are eager to get up there and enjoy our, this part of town and, and Oakland as well. So we're hopefully going to be opening up before the weekend, Friday, maybe a, a little bit earlier. We're just going to keep you know, safety is the number one priority before we make that call. And I know the county's working hard a little higher up. I received an update from them earlier today. I think they're probably at two to three weeks of work up there, a little bit higher up. That was a little higher up in Oakland Creek there. So that's the, the quick update. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Go ahead.
Do we, do, do it if we or the, the county declared any type of emergency as a result of Mario's storm?
A declaration of emergency, yeah, no.
The county did not either. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? No?
I'll move approval.
Do we have any public comment on this?
No comments.
Okay, we have a first.
I'll second that.
Beaver and Venable, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, sir. All right, moves us to item number seven. Anna?
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. Item number seven is going to be the monthly report on the Ucaipa app. This is going to be for August of twenty twenty-five. Okay, so for August, we had a total of a hundred and seventy-nine monthly users. We had a total of two hundred and eighty-one reported issues. And once again, our top issue was streets. We saw a pretty significant decrease from the month of July in both the total monthly users and the issues submitted. Our issues by, by type, we had our majority of issues related to streets. Code enforcement issues came in close second with eighty-three issues. And then homeless issues was a distant third with only twenty-three issues reported. Our response times for street city issues, it was an average of three days. For code enforcement issues, an average of three days. And for homeless issues, just a little over two days. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments from my colleagues?
You know, I'm running into a lot of people that don't know about our app on our phones. So I mean, is there, you know, maybe our every quarterly flyer that we send out with all the different, can we put it on there or has it been on there?
The app is highlighted in that. In addition, I think we push out information on the social media platforms regarding the app.
Because we have our trails, I mean, all our, everything in there that we can look up and stuff. And a lot, a lot of people don't realize that. So I don't know how to push this more.
Yeah, this is, this is what the, what it looks like when you open it. So you can, you know, join the line at City Hall. You can see our calendar. You can report illegal fireworks still. There's multiple different things available here. It's, it's a great app.
Our agenda's on there on Thursdays, right? On Thursday or Friday?
Not through this. That's going to be more through the city website. If you click on the city website.
I think it is if you go to government on your, on your government and then you go to agendas.
Let's see, I, I see, if I click on government, I see all of, all of your pictures on there and I see all of the information on the.
On the very top, it'll have agendas and.
It definitely takes you to the city page. And so there's, there's information, lots of good information available on the app. We can try pushing out maybe some more social media posts and see if maybe that'll get the word out.
That'd be awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Happy to do that.
No other comments, questions, concerns? No public comment?
No public comments on this item.
All right, so that's receiving file. All right, item number eight for me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. This item is regarding the Ucaipa baseball field backstop fencing enhancement options. This is the, the baseball field that is owned and maintained by the city and is home to the Ucaipa High School baseball team. They have been the primary user of that field for many years and on occasion that field is rented to other baseball groups similar to other city fields. On September eighth, city council directed staff to research options to improve spectator safety at this field specifically for the spectator safety due to foul balls in the bleacher, the concrete bleacher area behind the infield. Tonight, staff is recommending that the city council receive a report regarding two potential options to enhance that backstop fencing. Both options are shown on page one fifty-six of the agenda. And I'll just quickly go through the options. Option A is the option to extend the chain link fencing behind the backstop. That option, the estimated cost for that option is about forty thousand dollars. Option B is to design and install a custom engineered tieback net and post system. That will take a little longer to complete, about four to six months, and has an estimated cost of about a hundred and twenty thousand. Option A, which is just a chain link fencing extension, that could be done within the next thirty or forty-five days, if not sooner, depending on the contractor's availability. For option A. For option A, at an estimated cost of $40,000, that can be done within the current budget, the current adopted budget, by deferring some of the park and trail fencing repairs that are planned for this year until next year to accommodate the budget for that work. Option B, which is a little more expensive, about $120,000, will require staff to reprioritize other more major planned park and public facility maintenance projects until next year or beyond. On the screen is a list of the planned, what we consider the major repair and maintenance projects for parks and facilities. And in order, we're showing this in order to show that to accommodate option B, option B in the cost of about $120,000, we would have to defer some of these projects. And staff would recommend deferring the two projects that are highlighted if option B, the more permanent netting and structure, engineer structure system is selected. And again, those, the two projects that would be deferred is the community park playground equipment replacement. That, as, as the name says, is at Community Park. And the other project is the community center banquet room wall replacement. This is the banquet room at the community, community center on Oakland Road. That concludes my report. And the recommendations before you tonight is that direct staff to proceed with option A and authorize staff to execute the agreements to complete the work with an estimated cost of $40,000. Or if the City Council elects to proceed with option B, with an estimated cost of about $120,000, to direct staff to reprioritize and further defer the other planned maintenance, excuse me, maintenance projects to provide budget to fund this option. That concludes my report. And staff is available for questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or concerns for staff?
I'll make a motion to approve A.
Before we go that route, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So, you have a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Do I got a first and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I real quick ask, I know it's already done, but what's wrong with the wall? Why don't we just replace it?
That's the wall. Megan might have some more information.
Oh, Megan. Sorry. Is one of those dividing walls that slides out? Is it broken?
Yes, it is a dividing wall and it is in need of repair. Scott and his team have done a really good job. I heard an analogy earlier, putting lipstick on a pig.
He did that, huh?
He's great.
Scott's talented. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, brings us to item nine. It's a public hearing. We are going to open the public hearing and the current time is 8:24. Mr. Matlock.
All right, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Before you is ordinance number 462, the second reading of the California Building Code update. So, as we heard at the September 8th City Council meeting, this is the update to the city's provisions for the building code to make sure that as the 2025 building code goes into effect, all of our provisions remain in place. This is essentially normally for ordinances, a second reading is just a consent item. But because it's a building code, it does trigger a second public hearing, which is why I'm here for you tonight. And then also included as part of the approval is adoption of resolution number 2025-55, which identifies our local climatic kind of provisions and how the building code revisions align to those. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any public comment?
No comments on this item.
Comments or questions for staff? Do you have a motion?
Salute.
Can we close the public hearing, please?
You're right. Current time is 8:25, closing the hearing. And we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Beaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Thork?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, moves us to our last item, item number 10, also a public hearing. Current time is also still 8:25. Thanks, back to you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Tonight before you is kind of the appeal or the call-up from the City Council of the Planning Commission's decision related to two special use permits. So, PLN-PHE 25-0002 and 0004. And this is for the collection or the placement of three 4x4 used clothing collection boxes on commercial properties, one at the Ukaypa Point Project and then one at the Vaughn's Retail Center as well. And so, again, the locations at the Vaughn's Center is within the kind of opposite of where Vaughn's is at along the drive aisle that kind of provides access along the back of it. And it is within the community commercial district of the Chapman Heights Development Plan. And then at Ukaypa Point is next to kind of where the Trader Joe's rear of the building is. And this is within the service commercial land use district. Kind of site plan, the locations have been proposed in order to kind of minimize their appearance from public right of way. And so, in the Vaughn's Center, it is located kind of where the roadway, you know, hillside kind of slopes up that way. It's a little bit more obscured from it. And then it's long here, we would take up one parking space. And then at the Ukaypa Point Project, it is located more than 220 feet from Ukaypa Boulevard along the end of the drive aisle, parking spaces here across from the Starbucks. And then there's the Trader Joe's over here. And then this is how the stretcher looks like. So, it's nice green stretchers at four feet by four feet by seven feet. There is signage on all the stretchers with contact information and details about the bin contents, which is for clothes and shoes. And then it is designed with a durable waterproof and rust proof paint requirement. And so, this is kind of the locations of it. They did place the stretchers out after the Planning Commission approval. And so, certainly as part of tonight's decision, they can remove them as well if it is not approved or retain them moving forward. And then this is the location where this structure would go along that drive aisle. And then you can see Ukaypa Boulevard in the, in the background. Now, as part of the project review, we did receive a public comment from a neighboring property owner with concerns about kind of the maintenance schedule and litter potential. Want to make sure that as a inactive kind of recycling spot, people aren't just dumping a bunch of stuff there. And then the city's Public Safety and Police Department also did have concerns about the potential conflict with the council's adopted homeless strategic plan or potential issues with the use. And so, want to bring that to the forefront for council as part of their deliberation. This was reviewed at the August 20th, 2025 Planning Commission hearing. The applicant did provide operational details for the business as well as their site maintenance responsibilities, which they can dock on tonight, as well as testimony from the Ukaypa Point Commercial Property Owner. Their kind of note was that they do want to maintain an attractive site for their tenants. They want to make sure that their tenants are happy. And so, if, at one point, if the, the use becomes a nuisance, they have a one-day notice to vet if there are problems. And so, the Planning Commission, based on those, that pieces of information, did motion to approve. They did modify the conditions that renewals required every year. So, if there is issues that is appropriate, then that is one ground of revocation. But certainly also, if there is junk or debris that occurs, then we have the wiggle room to be more aggressive on our enforcement as well, in addition to the property owner rights that they have in terms of terminating that use as well. And so, with that, council has two different options. One is to approve the special use permits for both locations. And then, subject to the conditions of approval, if there's any additional conditions you guys would like to see, that can also be done. Or alternatively, if it is not acceptable, then the City Council can deny those use permits with it. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. And then the applicant's representative, as well as one of the property owners, is also available for their testimony.
Thank you, sir. If the applicant's here, do they want to make a presentation? Do that next.
Hello, Council, Mayor. Long evening. You was really informative. Thank you. My name is Tom Robinson. I'm the owner of Ukaypa Point and the developer. I spoke at Planning Commission a few weeks ago, I don't know, maybe it was a month, and we were approved. And so, I'm going to sort of reiterate some of the stuff. And there were some concerns that were brought up and I've heard some other concerns. I want to address those. I hope you all can see how we've been patient with this shopping center, how we waited for the right tenants. I think with the Trader Joe's opening up, which I'll drive by there out of town tonight and still drive through there and go, Trader Joe's is here. And that's a big accomplishment. And it's part of the tenacity of us going after the tenants we wanted to. We're going to be opening up a Buffalo Wild Wings, a full 6,000 square foot prototype in the center shortly. We're going after another high-quality sit-down national restaurant, which I think we're going to get, but I'm not sure. This tenant here, I read an article, I think it was in Wall Street, but it might have been USA Today. And I read about the amount of textiles that are thrown away in dumps and incinerated in the United States. And it's 11 million tons a year. And 85% of the stuff that's thrown out goes into dumps. There's thrift stores that take some of the clothes. There's private businesses that deal. This company, I sought out. They didn't come after me. I went after them and said, hey, I've got a great shopping center in Ukaypa. And I want you to take a look at it as well as some of my other locations because I think there's a need. 11 million tons is a lot of clothes. Just think of the 55,000 people that live in Ukaypa. If everybody's just throwing out a pair of pants, a socks, a shirt, which they throw out more, it's not all reused. And there's no way all the thrift stores can do it. So, this company takes it. They sell the, they recycle some of it, but they sell some of it also to South America and other countries, which also some, a majority of the other thrift shops in the country that are national do the same thing. We've got a problem with dumps filling up and everything else. This solves part of that problem and that's why I'm going after them. We, in the shopping center, have someone there almost every day. So, certain shopping centers take different, and owners take different care of their businesses, which our business is the shopping center. We have someone in the shopping center every single day, either a day porter, day porters almost every day. But someone from my company's in there every day or the property manager. So, we're there monitoring this constantly. Where we have this located, right behind Trader Joe's, right in front of Starbucks. There's no hidden areas. No one can hide around. The safety issue, it's right out. And the quality of the bins and their painting and the sturdiness of it is second to none. Ben brought up that once we got Planning Commission hearing approval, they went out and put the bins back. So, I got a call from Ben. And I forget what it was, but it was after he said, hey, it's being appealed, being brought up to council. I go, oh, they put the bins back out? And he goes, oh, okay. Well, I called the company. Guess what happened? Next day, Ben's gone. So, they came and got him the next day. So, they're very responsive and that's why I'm working with them. There's not going to be messes with clothes in the, in the parking lot or anything. If there were, we'd clean it up right away. And like the slide said, I have a termination right of one day in the contract. So, I don't, I can't speak for the other shopping center. And I won't. And I think you can separate both of ours out. I've been to both hearings because I care about this. This is insignificant in monetary money to the shopping center. But it's a use we want to have in. It's one we feel strongly about. I've heard something about business going away from Ukaypa businesses. 11 million tons and 55,000 people. There is so much excess clothes and this makes it convenient. I'm guilty of it. I throw clothes out and that's one of the reasons I like this because it's easy to go buy and throw it in the dump. Think about the shoes that will, you use that will never be resold in a thrift shop or a shirt or something that's totally worn. They use those and sell them. So, the other thing is, it is a for-profit business. And I like that because they take a little bit more care because they are for profit. Not that the nonprofits don't care, but when you have people making money and having to make sure this works, I think there's a little more focus on it. I'm here to answer any questions. I don't think it's a controversial use. Hopefully, we can get this approved tonight and we'll keep it on a tight leash. If, I guarantee you, before anything the city would complain about, I would be out there complaining before anyone or code enforcement would be doing it. So, if you have any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. We might call you back up a minute if you have questions. First, we need to see if you have any public comment.
We do. Niles O'Hara?
Good evening again, Council. You get me twice in one night. It must be for a good cause. Again, thank you, electeds, for pulling this item. There was definitely some confusion or perhaps disagreement. I don't know. Not a full voting body in the appointed planning commission. So, I think it was wisdom to pull this and allow the electeds to go ahead and handle this item. You know, I have constituents that overlap with three of you here tonight. I think that I speak with some wisdom when I say, I know what my neighborhood feels. I know what my neighborhood looks for, okay? The, this clothing dump site is not something that my neighborhood looks for. I understand and I think it is well that we're allowed a clash of opinion, capitalists on capitalists over here. I think it is, it is good for us to be able to enjoy this sort of conversation in this group and to be able to see the result and respect that, move forward together as a community, no matter what. But in the, the discussion of it, I have a lot of concerns and I'm not the only one that has them. I would wager that a number of you have also received some of these concerns. Now, I'm not here to talk about some of the baggage that the company's going to be bringing in, some of their legal troubles with the city of Los Angeles, some of their compliance issues with the city of Oakland. I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to talk about what's happening in Ukaypa. As the gentleman stated, he sought them out. Now, there is literally zero data that has been presented to say they are fulfilling a need. I reject that premise. In fact, I would interject, they are taking revenue from our constituents' pockets. We already have churches and businesses that operate in this manner, in a clean, efficient way. They have a storefront. They pulled a business license. They're subject to inspection. They are regulated. It's not some goodwill, oh, it's going to be cleaned up. Speaking from people that literally aren't going to be there every day, it's all word of mouth. I, I think that your community values its first responders. We really appreciate our sheriff deputies here in town. I think it is monumental that your public safety manager and that your sheriff's department have documented concerns. We're creating little blinds, especially the Vaughn's one, but also the Ukaypa Point one. You have a blind for the vagrants to go do what they do. How horrible would it be that one of these people that live in the street crawl into one of these bins and die as we've seen in the news, as happened in Lodi, California earlier this year? And we had a documented paper trail of public safety concerns. Council, we ask you, please listen to your constituents. We do not want these clothing dump sites in our city. We do appreciate the business ventures that are occurring. If the money wasn't, if it didn't matter, then why not go ahead and donate that funds over to the city of Ukaypa? Thank you.
No more public comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I ask Diana from Code Enforcement to speak on this?
We can't, well, we can. It's a public hearing. So, would we have to close the public hearing before we introduce that or we keep it open?
No, you can keep it open in that.
Keep it open? Okay. That's fine.
Okay.
Good evening again. Step four of our homeless strategic plan is a reduction of attractants. As a member of the SOF team, I could say that this is going to be an attractant to the community. We already get, get multiple complaints of transient activity in and around that shopping center. So, adding this bin is going to be bringing more complaints. I've seen in my previous jurisdiction where transients break into the bins and throw clothes around the parking lot and the area. I could use the recycling center in the State Brother Shopping Center, for example. Before that recycling center was placed there, there was minimal homeless activity. Now, I see them almost every day walking towards this recycling center with their trash bags or they're storing, they're storing shopping carts full of trash bags. So, I could see these bins bringing in that same type of activity in the area. Also, they're going to remove some business- Also, they're going to remove some business from our local businesses here, where you could get donations given to the churches or thrift stores. They'll be giving it to these bins now. So I don't see it benefiting the city. I'd see it going against what our homeless strategic plan is, which is removing the attractants, and it's adding another attractant for us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, applicant rebuttal? Do you have anything you have to say to the comments?
Thank you. First of all, I'm a member of this community also, and we own residential units right behind the shopping center also. My track record in Ukaypa is spotless, 100% impeccable. So to hear this might happen, this might happen. Yeah, there might be a lot of stuff that happens, but it's how you react to it. And there's homeless in every shopping center. We have people in our shopping center all the time. We have our tenants trained. If they see someone, they'll call the police department. We're on top of this. So to insinuate that I wouldn't take care of my shopping center and somehow I'm going to change, is just ridiculous. It's called NAOP, that's what it's called. And if, one of the other things, I was there also, they said, why don't you go ask the guys in the blue suits, how easy is your city to deal with? Well, I think I'm pretty easy to deal with and pretty trustworthy. And you don't have to trust me up here tonight. You can see what I've done over the last five years. I've done everything, and you can ask staff. Ask staff, they've liked dealing with me. And code enforcement, I've never dealt with her before, but I've dealt with other code enforcements. And I give them their my telephone number, my cell number, saying, hey, if there's anything going on, you don't have to write a report, just call us, because we'll get on it right away. And that's how we feel. So I really would like to see you guys approve this tonight. I don't, I don't think it's fair if you don't. Thank you. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. At this point, we'll close the public hearing at 8:43. We'll bring it to council for discussion. I will start to my left. Councilman Woolsey?
Okay, Mr. Robinson, I understand. You've done a great job down, down there. I do understand that. And I understand and hear what you're saying about being on top of it and, and keeping it clean and that type of thing. But it's, again, like we said, what-ifs and that type of thing. But my concern has come from, as a couple of the other people mentioned, our local businesses. And I spent time Saturday morning up in our shopping area, a little old-town area on California Street. And I went into the cutest little store. I didn't even know it was there. It's called Second Act Resale. And I visited with her, and I said, do you take donations? And she said, no, I don't. She says, I set up appointments with people that want to donate. And she inspects the clothing and everything, and picks out the ones that she wants to put in her shop, and she purchases them. And then she puts them out on the floor to be sold. And then she said, they really don't take donations, but if people want to give donations, then they pass it on down to Redlands, to women's shelters down there. So, you know, it's, it's, they move around and they go to good uses. I visited two other stores that purchased some clothing. Uptown Treasure Hunt, they have a very small store, but they do take a few things for resale. And they do purchase and then resale. And then also, on the very corner there is Loved Homestead. And he said the very same thing. And he was concerned when he heard about this. I did invite him to come tonight, and they didn't, unfortunately. But there are stores up there that are struggling to stay open, and we should be supporting them. We also have Set Free thrift store, we have the Ukaypa Family Assistance Store. We have several churches that I know offer free clothing along with their food assistance programs. And I think the thing that really jumps out at me, and I know there's some, I think, women's organizations or something that do this. People will put on social media, prom's coming up, homecoming's coming up. My daughter wants a dress, she wants to go. We cannot afford, you know, to go to a store and purchase her a dress. And there's organizations that step up and provide, especially for prom. Prom dresses, purses, shoes, the whole kit and caboodle for these kids, because this is important to them. So that's where I'm coming from, the fact that we need to support our own hometown businesses.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Miller? Councilman Beaver?
Been a peace officer for 17 years. I've, I've encountered these recycling centers in several jurisdictions that I've worked in. In one instance, I was the primary responding deputy at the time to an attempted murder investigation, whereby a unhoused individual became so enraged that another unhoused individual was, was, I'm going to use his words, poaching in his area, taking the clothes that he saw fit were his, that he stabbed him three times in the abdomen and one punctured a lung. This is the kind of stuff that I've experienced happening in one jurisdiction not far from here, in the county of San Bernardino. In my experience in LA County, it's even worse. Nobody, let me rephrase. Mr. Robinson, I'm not questioning you as a businessman. I think you're a phenomenal businessman, and I think you've done amazing things for Ukaypa. But I'm, since we're, since we're throwing out old adages like lipstick on a pig, I'm going to throw out one as well. And it's when you play with fire, you get burned. And I would, I think you'll respond appropriately should you be burned, but I don't want you to just be burned in the first place. Nor do I want my city to experience, my, my city, I'm going to say that, I'm not saying ownership, but the city I love, to experience an increase in homelessness and the crime that I've seen and experienced come along with it. We have, and I'm going to comment on this in a little bit, when we do our announcements, we sat through a public safety committee meeting that was long overdue last week. The city of Ukaypa, thanks in part to the phenomenal work by our code enforcement SOFT team member here, has driven down homelessness in our city by over 70% in the last two years. Ukaypa does not tolerate lawlessness. And the unfortunate truth is, while homelessness is not illegal, homelessness brings with it a certain level of crime that is inherent. And when we, as a city, decided years ago that what we are going to do is go after criminals, regardless of where they are living, whether it be in a box or a mansion, with a zero tolerance approach, what we saw was a drive down in homelessness because there is a certain level of crime that is associated with homelessness, and it's just a sad reality. So, with that being said, I have seen these, and I think this is, this is where Mr. Robinson is absolutely correct. I don't think that we're going to see, on his property at least, a break into a recycling box and the scattered out clothing, the non-functioning doors, because I believe he is very responsive. But by opening this up, we're allowing it to go anywhere potentially. And I would, like I said, when you play with fire, you get burned. And I don't have an appetite for fire at this point, as it relates to this.
Mayor Proton?
You know, I raised three girls here, and I always told them to dress appropriate, because you don't want to attract the wrong person. And this kind of runs in that same thing. You know, we're bringing things to Ukaypa, and we don't want to attract the wrong people here to do that. So it's, it's, like you said, I, I agree with Councilman Beaver. You're a great businessman, you do a lot of great work here and stuff, but this attracts people that I don't think that we need here in Ukaypa, so.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robinson, I think you're doing a phenomenal job down there. I think the shopping centers turn out great, looks great. I like the pride and the effort and the work and time that you've put into that down there. It's, it's turning into a phenomenal shopping center. I do have some concerns about these bins as well. And I'm going to go back many years ago. When I first started patrolling here in Ukaypa, there was an establishment, they're still here in town, but they've moved locations, that was in the, used to be in the gravel parking lot, right next to the Y-Pak. It wasn't the Y-Pak then, and it was a used thrift store. And items would pile up on that back dock, and then people would start living there. And then it honestly looked like you brought a Burtuck, Burtec trailer and dumped it there. And rarely could you ever get that thing cleaned up. It, it bred a lot of blight. That was one location. Further down the boulevard, in front of one of our hardware stores, they used to have a Goodwill trailer. That's what it was when I was a kid, in different, different cities I lived in. That's what you went to, you went to a Goodwill trailer, it was normally manned by somebody. I don't know if this one in town was or not. But when I'd drive by on patrol at night, you'd see stuff stacked up under the truck, behind the truck. Then you'd drive by early in the morning, and someone had gotten into it, and it was strewn across the whole parking lot. It was, looked like someone had dumped trash everywhere. So when this was asked to be brought back, I, I've listened to the planning commission meeting, I listened to the concerns from the commissioners and their votes. And I got online, and I found this company's website. And today, I visited, I want to say, seven locations in our nearby cities to include, because this is where they were. I tried to find some in Calamasa, didn't see any, didn't see any in Redlands. It took me to Highland, San Bernardino, Colton. The areas and neighborhoods that it took me to were not the kind of areas and neighborhoods that we would like to model our city after more than likely. One location didn't have a box, so it's either gone, or they've mapped that that's where it's going to be. It looks like a fairly new gas station. Most of the locations where the boxes were, were in gas stations, two were in shopping centers. Probably half of the boxes that I found had the large lock on the outside of the box missing. But you could tell from the front of the box that there's an internal lock as well. That was in place. Multiple boxes had either some sort of graffiti, attempted removal of graffiti, and whatever they'd used to put graffiti on those boxes had, the pigment had stained the, the boxes to a point where you could still make out a lot of what the graffiti was. Some were damaged. One door was, I, I didn't try it. I don't know if it was just propped open, or if it wasn't functioning properly. It kind of looked like maybe it might have been bent, like it wasn't operating, operating properly. Most of them didn't look like they're bolted down, but I was in a suit, so I wasn't really wanting to relish climbing down the ground, looking at these boxes to figure out if they're bolted down or not. The one that I found at a gas station in San Bernardino downtown, right not far from the old Carousel Mall, was bolted down to a curb with right-angle brackets that you could get probably from the hardware store, and either Phillips head or slothead screws. They weren't even redheaded into the concrete, I think is what you refer to, those bolts that go on the concrete redheads. So I guess my point is, is that while they may be pristine on this property with your oversight, I am concerned about the way they will tend to look over time. If they remove them or something happens, they will probably lightly try to clean it up, but I don't know that it will be to the satisfaction that we would want, or maybe even you would want. And I have to agree that I think that we are kind of playing with something that would probably be a, a bit of a problem. And in one of our, one of our goals on, on our objectives list, and objectives and goals for this year, was to address the homelessness and crime, right? So, you, you know, it's, we want to keep those numbers going down. And I would have to agree with the concerns that have already been voiced here. There were some concerns that were voiced on the planning commission. And that's why I spent a couple hours of my time today, driving around, checking these boxes, just to see what kind of repair they're in. Was there any stuff stacked up on the outside? No. One of them, literally right across the street, was at least three people camped out with stuff. I don't know if they got it from the box, or if they got it from elsewhere. But the gas station that was supposed to have a box had a couple people sleeping behind the back of the gas station. So I guess my point is, is that it, it does seem to have some credence to the concerns, that it's kind of breeds some blight that we probably are not going to want in our brand-new shopping, your brand-new shopping center that the community gets to utilize. Is a awesome development down there, and I would like to keep it that way. So I'm, I'm not in favor of it, so. This is a public hearing, so it's going to have to be a roll call vote. I need a motion and a second first.
So, and forgive my ignorance, as I'm reading the recommendations, it's, it's not entirely clear. It says, review the special use permit. And it says, if acceptable, approve the design. So at this point, if there is no motion made, what would happen to this item? Or does it need to be voted down?
So, so we're going to need a motion from, from the council. I, I understand the concern about the recommendations, but if you look at the paragraph following one, two, and three, the recommend, the motion the council could make is to deny the special use permits affiliated with the case numbers listed there.
Do you need to read these for the record?
I think you could, you could just make a motion to deny the special use permits. So moved.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second. With that, Madam Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Councilmember Beaver?
Yes, to deny. Right, yes to no? Sorry. Yes, I think the answer.
You're, you're acting like me now.
I think it's yes to no.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Venable?
Yes.
Mayor Thorpe?
Yes.
Motion carried to deny.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, with that, it brings us to council member comments. Mayor Proton, what you got?
Well, you know, I was thinking about, I did make a motion this morning, at this, at the beginning, to pull item number one, right? So now if I can't, I'm confused on my vote on that. So it's still a vote yes? So do I move to reconsider? Would take my vote off there, but it has to be approved by the, or voted in from the dais, right?
So, so council member, if someone were to pull the ordinance, at the end, it'll say the ayes, the noes, the abstains. Your name will be listed as aye in favor, because you voted in favor of the consent calendar. The minutes for the meeting will reflect your opposition to the item. And the minutes from the previous meeting will reflect your opposition to the first reading and introduction of the ordinance. If what you are looking for is to change your vote on that ordinance, it's going to be a little tricky, but what, what you can do is, the first thing you can do is ask the council if they will be willing to suspend the rules. Because we would need a motion to reconsider the item, in order to place it on a future agenda. You can only make a motion to reconsider an item at the same meeting that the vote took place, under the normal rules. But if you suspend the rules, you can have it at a subsequent meeting, like this one here. A motion to suspend the rules requires a two-thirds vote in the affirmative, which for five people means you need four affirmative votes. And then you would need the motion for reconsideration to pass. That requires a simple majority. And then we could place the item on a, on a future meeting agenda.
So would you guys be willing to do that?
You want my opinion? Me, no. I think, I think voting that you voted, but then having it explained as an asterisk or whatever in the minutes, and indicating that you've realized that you voted a certain way, and then you want it to be, be it known that you objected to that now. And that's still allowed, correct?
Yes.
In that, in that form? I think that would, I like that way better, but that's from my seat, and I'm one on five.
Can, can I ask the lawyer a question? How can an item that had a no vote then be placed on the consent agenda? Because then you're putting that person that voted no to, as happened, not realizing that he was approving something that he voted no against, and, and wants to keep his vote that way.
So it, it is very common for the second reading of ordinances to be placed on the consent calendar, simply as a matter of course. I think one of the things that will work with the city clerk's office on is simply making sure that we give you all a note before the meeting. And it's as simple as, I'm going to vote in favor of the consent calendar, but I want a no noted on that particular item, in the same way that you can abstain from an item that you have a conflict on, on the consent calendar. We can, we can make that happen for the council member and any other member of the council in the future, just to make sure that we are respecting your no votes.
Okay, because it will, it will reflect, reflect then in the minutes.
It'll reflect in the minutes and on the ordinance going forward. We'll, we'll keep an eye on that for the council.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, he has covered the fact that he really... Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, he has covered the fact that he really won, is voting no.
We understand that.
Yeah.
So for, in this case, for this ordinance, it's going to be reflected on the minutes. Uh, the ordinance itself will have a yes vote. Going forward in the future, we'll make sure that we inform the council members when there's something on consent that you voted no on, so that you can revoice your, your opposition to it. Keep in mind, most things on the consent calendar only come one time, right? It's only going to be ordinances that come twice.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Would your, did your no vote, would it change the ordinance?
No.
This is just philosophical in nature, you want to make sure that you're.
No, yeah.
Chris, we've got a lot of stuff going on, man. I think it's, I think you made it very clear that you are opposing it.
Right.
And that even your secondary vote on the consent calendar wasn't a voting of approval of the matter. I get it what it was said, but for me, it's our job as the council to move ordinances forward, whether you agree with them or not, right? You know that the council by, by majority pushed the ordinance forward. By second reading, you're, you are, you effectively are carrying out the will of the council by, by moving it forward as well. Um, again, your no would have, if it would have changed something for certain, if, if you were the deciding vote, then obviously I would say let's bring it back because his voice matters, but.
I get it. Now, um, if I wanted to see if I can get something on the, uh, next agenda or a future agenda, like our stipend, the council stipend, I bring that.
So, uh, either the mayor can direct that we place something on a future agenda or, uh, a majority of the council, and it's usually by consensus. If you'd like us to place the council compensation ordinance on a future agenda, it's already prepared, uh, it does have to go at a public hearing, I think, so it may not be, actually it will be the next meeting because we have, uh, that, we have the, the second meeting in October. So we could get that on the next meeting if the council wanted us to, or the mayor wanted us to.
Council have a?
Second meeting in October.
The only meeting in October.
It's the only meeting.
There's only one meeting in October, yeah.
I, I understand, that's the way my brain works, it's.
So is there a consensus by council to, is that what you're asking? To bring that back and look at that particular one?
Yeah, please.
Is there a consensus from council to bring that back and look at our stipend, reviewing it?
I don't think it hurts to talk about it, you know? We can always, uh, vote yes or no. I know Mr. Miller's shaking his head here because of measure S and all that, but we still have a right to talk about it.
Okay, so you're, you're saying yes, bring it back.
Yes, bring it.
This is the wrong time to be talking about stipends, you know? You can bring it back if you want, but we should not be talking about stipends right now. I mean, we, we just spent how much time talking about a freeway quarter possibility with a referendum and what money we may have to spend. That would be horrible timing to ask for a stipend increase right now. That's just ridiculous.
Mr. Beaver. I mean, so while you get your thoughts, um, bringing it back, bringing it back and talking about it, I have a problem with that. I, I, and then when the arguments are presented, I think I could have an argument for one way or another with that at the time. We can't get too far in that conversation now because it's not agendized. But, um, but if you want to, I, I mean, I'm okay bringing it back, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that means that I'm in favor of whatever you're trying to do.
I, yeah, that's not my intention.
So.
It's not much trouble, it's already drafted.
But I'm, you can bring it back, but I would ask that staff include information about, like almost a, a, a pseudo comp in class as well, or maybe just comp rather than class. We know what city councils do, but I'm curious to know if our little sister city south of the border, if their council are making more and how that works and other cities on comparable sizes. Obviously, we can't compare with very large cities like LA and Beverly Hills and stuff, but if you can kind of look into that as well for future information going forward. I think we are one of the lower, we're, we're effectively a volunteer city council, let's be real.
But according to comments, we are lending our pockets and we are living high on the hog.
I should be living high on the hog.
I'm just saying, if I wanted to make money.
Yeah, I'm doing it wrong.
I wouldn't be sitting here. But anyway, that's, that's me.
I think you have consensus though.
I think the consensus is bring it back for discussion, but.
We'll bring it back and if we can find additional information that may, uh, guide you, we can bring that as well.
Okay.
And the youth advisory, we're looking for, I think, five kids right now. And then, uh, the, uh, park and recreation, we're looking for one high school kid. Boy or girl, either one.
Did you lose them?
Uh, graduations.
Oh, okay. Just, I was going to say, search and rescue is affiliated with the sheriff's department.
Right. But yeah, so we are, uh, looking, I don't think that we will have a problem filling those seats. We got a group of, uh, great kids so far, so that's it.
Copy. Mr. Beaver.
So, uh, the Public Safety Ad Hoc Committee met last, uh, week on the fifteenth. Uh, we discussed a lot of, uh, a lot of information. It was actually like a two hour meeting, I think by the time it was all said and done. The fire department is doing amazing things, they're just asked to do a lot of amazing things with, uh, not a lot of staff. And, um, the, as, as demonstrated by that Safer Grant where we got the new, um, compression machine for our SCBAs is huge. Um, our chief of, our new chief of police, Captain Weevil, uh, welcome. I've said it before, this is our first chance to have a discussion with you in a public safety ad hoc. Uh, I think that was huge, that's why I asked for it to be agendized, um, when it was. I do want to work on having this be more of a quarterly discussion versus, uh, as needed. But thank you for bringing your wealth of knowledge and experience to our, to our community. I, I, without getting too into it, because I know there's a lot of hoops to jump through, the fact that you were bringing your experience from a crime lab to our community to, to talk about presumptive testing and how we can get more filings from the DA's office so we can hold those who are, uh, breaking the law, state law and our municipal code accountable, is huge. I'm not, I'm not entirely certain, you know, every captain brings with them a level of expertise and experience from different portions of the, of their, their career. Captain Walker brought a lot of experience from homicide with him and you bring in crime lab with, with you to us. So we're getting a scientific investigations division, um, view on things and that's, that's huge. It's really helping shape our community, so thank you for that. E-bike enforcement is a discussion we were talking about. We want to make sure that everybody is, um, aware that, um, our police, uh, our, our sheriff's deputies, our police officers here for the city, um, if you, if you are a parent who has recently purchased an e-bike for your young son or daughter, stay on top of them with what they're doing because our deputies are getting in pursuits with children on e-bikes that are going sixty miles an hour. And they're stopping chasing them because it doesn't make sense to chase a child who could kill themselves over a, a potential infraction. I get a misdemeanor if you're running from the police and it could get very dangerous, but the fact is, we have as a community have to do something, um, to address this problem because more and more often our deputies are getting what should just be, hey Johnny, go home, stop riding your bike in this area, turning into a full-fledged vehicle pursuit effectively. Very dangerous, something where this council is going to have to talk about, more about. And I don't like the idea of just throwing laws at the books. There's already law that says you need to pull over when a cop gets behind you. Maybe education is something we need to do, but that's something this council is going to have to discuss as well. From a public safety, uh, department standpoint, our, our public safety manager was there. He gave a phenomenal point in time count, SO, or the SOP team update. We have driven down homelessness in our city. Um, we have given, uh, every time we have these public safety updates, we get briefed on people accepting, uh, assistance being placed in placement, that is a success story. And I would challenge anybody who, and I've, I have, people have already come forward and like, oh, the ACLU is going to get involved. Let them, we're do, all we're doing is enforcing the law. And if that is a problem, they need to take it up with Sacramento, not with City of Ucaipa. Our deputies, our SO, our SOP team members are enforcing laws. Homelessness is a small aspect of it, the bigger part of it is you need to be compliant with law, so thank you for that. The city has shifted towards, uh, having more technology for our police and fire so that they can have, uh, phone, uh, connectivity anywhere they go. We can have, uh, if, even if they're in the deepest parts of our mountainous community chasing somebody or looking for somebody, rescues, we have given them the, the tools they need to be, uh, able to access dispatch and, and more resources. Our accurate, so our, our code enforcement also, this council, through our work of our staff, has given our code enforcement more tools to be successful through investigations, kind of going back to what we talked about last time about, uh, a responsible person for a code case, right? It wasn't really talked about by, by, uh, public safety manager Benson then, but we learned about it in our, in our code, in our public safety meeting. Our city has historically robbed our code enforcement officers of some industry standard tools and techni, um, some investigative leads because they just didn't know. It's just the way we've always done it. Well, we, see what happens when you bring in outside minds and you bring in experts in their field and now we have these tools that are, are, I'm going to say, you're a bulldog, you go after our, our criminals and our, and even our residents who are violating our law intentionally with, you know, a, a, um, zero tolerance approach, compassion when needed, but getting compliance. And so thank you so much for what you do, you, I mean, we, we robbed her from banning, you guys know that? It was a great thing we did for us, I mean, the, Ucaipa is all the better because of it, so. It was a great meeting, uh, public safety is the priority for Ucaipa. Uh, I, I say it's the most important, um, committee we have, right, right behind finance probably because we've got to pay the bills. So you get, you get a shout out there, obviously we need to have the money to, in order to pay for our public safety. Uh, but those two are paramount in our community and this council, um, absolutely respects the rule of law. We put public safety above all else and we will not tolerate lawlessness in the city, nor will we ever find ourselves in a position where we will be entertaining any nonsensical ideas of defunding the police for political gain. So, uh, law, law violators beware, this is not the city to bring your, your problems.
Thank you sir, Councilmember Woolsey.
Well, Mr. White, I'm going to be disappointing this time for you because I know you enjoy these. Okay, nine eleven, the ceremony here at the city hall. Nine fifteen, the finance committee. And I also did an onboarding with the One Water, One Watershed Steering Committee for Sapa. And then on nine sixteen, the Ucaipa Valley Water District Meeting. And nine seventeen, the NAOP panel event that I referenced to and also the state of the county, um, in, um, Ontario, yeah, state of the county in, uh, San Bernardino. So it was a slow two weeks.
What do you do with all your free time there Judy, goodness?
Oh, you'd be surprised.
Did you have a good time at the state of the county?
I, oh, it was amazing. I'm sorry that Scott left because I was going to tell him. Uh, it was absolutely amazing, Jennifer was there. And it's just unreal what goes on in this county. You would not, did you know that we raise orchids up in the high, in the desert, wasn't it? Orchids, they've raised them for what, like thirty years?
Family owned business. Family owned business.
Yeah.
This is like church organs?
Orchids.
Orchids, the plant.
Orchids.
Orchids!
Like a flower.
If we're making organs, organs.
Did I say organs if I did, I'm sorry?
Orchids, that makes more sense.
That's what I do in my spare time, Justin.
Councilman Miller.
Uh, thank you, and Councilmember Woolsey, you have, you have some great energy. I'm really proud of you, everything you go to and you, and you represent us very well, I got to be honest. Uh, just a couple of things, finance committee, we met, uh, last Monday and we, we enjoy, uh, fill your leadership in that committee and, uh, uh, Councilmember Woolsey and I sit on that. And it kind of gives us a little, a pre-game plan for what's going to be presented financially and we appreciate the work you guys do, so thank you. Um, and on the, I sit on the public safety committee with Justin, I thought he led a really good meeting. We were able to, uh, really flush out a lot of things and I think a good communication was opened. Um, I know it's hard for you guys who got two cops on the, on the thing, but we tried to be very nice and, uh, get through, uh, get through things. But good questions, I thought the dialogue was good, we need to continue to do that, uh, so we can report back to our, our citizens on, on what we're doing. But outstanding job you guys, also fire and, uh, especially the code enforcement numbers. That point in time study was excellent, I mean.
Look, I'm, I'm going to say it, we, we as a council, and it was even the last council, we kind of, we've all entold our public safety manager that he's going to be in charge of code enforcement. The work that the code enforcement is doing is phenomenal. I mean, Jennifer, your leadership's been secondhand as well, but with putting the right people in the right places have, have opened up so much more, um, growth and compliance and a, a willingness from people who are offending our, our code enforcement, our, our city code to voluntarily come to the table and talk and get it fixed. And, and before it was not the case, it was, we were, I was getting phone calls all the time about just, I'm getting fined. Out, out, I don't even know what I'm doing wrong, I just kept on getting tickets. Nobody will talk to me, nobody's answering the call. So un, under your leadership and putting the right people in the right place, um, you guys have done an amazing job, so. Sorry, take away that, it had to be said.
That was excellent, I appreciated that. So I had prepared something I want to talk about on a previous issue we had. I'm going to approach it a little bit differently than the mayor Protem did, but, uh, colleagues, we previously considered a moratorium on car washes in the city of Ucaipa and I voted against it. My reason is, I stated at the time was that I generally, I'm generally against moratoriums. I think it should be driven by private industry or there are emergency measures that should be, in my opinion, only used for emergencies. Nevertheless, though, I am interested in considering a zoning amendment which would limit or prohibit new car washes from being established. I would, uh, just like that the amendment go through the regular process, including consideration and recommendation by our planning commission before we would vote. So mayor, I'd ask that you would direct staff to prepare a zoning amendment that we would limit or prohibit establishment of new car washes in the city of Ucaipa and that they bring it forward in the normal process. And I had some dialogue with some citizens after we had talked about it. And, um, I actually talked to Councilmember Beaver a little bit later and I didn't know that had been such a, a item for the last couple of years. And then after, you know, which I thought was good dialogue between council members and citizens, that that was a pressing issue. So since it's already been voted on and done, that's fine. Um, I thought this was another way we could approach it as a zoning issue where there's no concentration. I think we can do that, uh, from my research. Uh, I know we're giving you more work, but I think it's a way we can approach, uh, Mr. City Attorney. I think we can do that if, if the council.
Do we have to give direction to agendize it, to bring it back so that we can point it to?
Ma, mayor, if you tell us to develop an ordinance, we will go through the process and bring it forward through planning commission and the council.
Okay, then let's do it.
Okay.
So, uh, I, I just would ask that we consider it and then we can, we can go when we get it in front of us again and, and go from there.
Talk about it then, okay. All right, thank you sir. Couple of things, one, before I forget, this coming weekend, nine twenty-seven, Autumn Fest. So come out and support our vendors, our local businesses, the Y-PAC, the, all that, all that stuff. Good English word right there, stuff, um, up there. So it, uh, it's a good thing and staff always does a good job, so I'm looking forward to it again. So that's coming up. Um, did you guys know that I am in a coloring book? So I don't know if you have an image of it, but, uh, staff took it, uh, my image and put it in a coloring book to give to Sequa Elementary Kids, came in for a tour this last week. And there was what, total combined about seventy-five kids? Uh, two different waves of kids through here and one of their little goody bag of things they gave away was about a six-page little coloring book, one of which is my big round head sitting behind the, uh, desk, it's the city council or city hall or something behind it, but anyway. Um, I am now in a coloring book pamphlet. Never thought that would happen, but anyway, the, the, the kids had a great time. It was, uh, great energy, asked great questions. They got a tour of the facility, Anna and staff worked with them and they had the fire truck out there, they had police car out there, they had a lot of interaction with city employees and functions, so. It was a great tour. With that in mind, um, the next city council meeting is October twenty-seventh. We'd only have one in October. And interim city manager, do you have anything to announce?
I do, I have two items. Um, tonight, uh, I brought before you the last time, uh, the annual rent control fee for mobile home parks. I've been your mobile home rent administrator since two thousand and four. At fifth grade, I don't know what you would have been.
I was a sophomore in high school.
Oh, all right. Um, so I'm going to be handing it over to Anna, she will become the rent administrator and Kim Metzler will remain the deputy rent administrator for the program here. So, uh, congratulations Anna, and, uh, that's good news. Um, the other item is Congressman Jay Obernolte will be here Wednesday night in the community meeting room, um, to host a military service academy information meeting. They are encouraging high school and middle school students to attend, but if you are a senior, they really are encouraging you to attend to get the valuable information. Ucaipa will be one of the locations and Hisperia will be the second. Uh, the doors open here in the community meeting room at six and then they will be here between six thirty and eight thirty. So I wanted to give a shout out to, to that service.
Perfect, thank you ma'am. With that, unless there's anything else, we are adjourned and it is nine twenty-one.